County Planning Commission Meeting of November 14, 2012. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, Mr. Villalobos. Would you please give us the TV coverage announcement and call the roll?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, and good morning to everyone. Planning Commission hearings are televised live on County of Santa Barbara television, CSB-TV, Channel 20 at 9:00 a.m. in the South Coast, Long Pokes, San Inas Valley, Santa Maria and Orkut areas. We broadcast Planning Commission hearings on Fridays at 5:00 p.m. on CSB-TV, Channel 20. Now for the roll call, Commissioner Blau.
Here.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Valencia.
Here.
And Commissioner Cooney.
Here.
And I believe we have one new Commissioner today. Mr. Allen was going to administer the oath of office, I believe.
That's great. We have, and welcome, Mr. Allen. It's been a few years since we've had the pleasure of your company down here, but we welcome you here to give the oath of office to our newest Commissioner.
That's my pleasure. Good morning, honorable members of the Commission and staff and members of the public. We're here today to administer the oath of office to your newest member of the Commission, and that's Joan Hartman. And Ms. Hartman, if you'll join me up here at the podium. Would you please raise your right hand and repeat after me? I solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And that I take this obligation freely.
And that I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right.[280.12][280.12](applause) Thank you, and good luck. Have a great day today.
Thank you again for your role and to your role with the county over many years. We really appreciate you. Commissioner Hartman, welcome. We very much appreciate you being here so soon after Commissioner Brooks left us and without missing a step, the Third District is back in good hands.
Thank you very much. I'm very happy to be here. I must say that it feels somewhat familiar. I've been watching DVDs and TV broadcasts of the Commission hearings, and it's been riveting, absolutely fascinating. Maybe not homeland, but you never know what's going to happen here, so it can be very suspenseful. But nonetheless, you have faith that things are differences will be narrowed and that things are going to be moving forward. I've never been on this side of the dais. I've spent my early career working for government agencies, so I've been staff on occasion, but mostly over the last 10 years, I've been a member of the public approaching the microphone. And it hasn't always been a happy experience. Too often, it felt like it was already a done deal and the public was just a prop in an empty ritual. Sometimes, members of the public were discourteous to those testifying. Even worse, sometimes, members of the decision-making body were disdainful. And instead of feeling uplifted, one could feel somewhat diminished by the experience. And even worse, other members of the public might not even come forward because it was it had a chilling effect on people. But as I watched these proceedings, it was the antithesis of that. I love the saying that "all of us is smarter than any one of us." And this process, in the way that it operates, is designed to make that happen. John Stuart Mill once posed the question, if you could have a benevolent dictator who made all the right decisions, would you choose that or would you choose democracy with all its messiness and inefficiencies? And of course, he answered democracy, but the reasons were because we grow. We put ourselves in other people's shoes, we test our ideas, and in that process, we grow as individuals, and the civic culture itself becomes stronger. And so, it's a sacred trust, like the oath I just took, to take part in this Commission because I think it really sets a stellar example for what democracy really means for us. So, I would like, in closing, to express my gratitude to Morel Brooks, who served so ably in this seat for four years. I would like to thank Supervisor Doreen Farr, who has put her faith in me to meet her high standards and yours. And the staff, who I can see already is really first-rate. But most of all, I'd like to thank my fellow Commissioners, who, as I reckon, have 36 years total in public service to this. And I think that is the way this forum operates is a testament to their dedication and devotion because this is where democracy happens, and I'm very, very proud to be part of it.
Thank you very much, and welcome. We look forward to your participation on the run, as we say. And in keeping with our messiness and inefficiencies, we'll start with the Agenda Status Report from Ms. McCurdy. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and members of the Commission. On your agenda today, we have one consent item. Item one on the standard agenda, as the agenda notes, is to be continued to December. And the other three items on your regular agenda, the ag buffer ordinance and two Crown Castle items, are all ready to go today.
Okay, very good. And the projection report, do you have that for us today?
Yes, I do. The 28th is a Monacito Planning Commission date, and one item of note on that date is that they will be considering the inclusionary housing ordinance. The December 5th date is being held as a potential date also for the Monacito PC. Your Commission meets again on December 12th, and you have quite a full day. There are quite a few items on that day. I think it's seven and a half hours of items, as well as the Planning Commission holiday luncheon. And then, on the 19th, we have two items, including the Inn at Mattie's Tavern, which will be a long item. So that day has, at this point, four and a half hours of time for your Commission. And I think I'll just leave it there. There are a few things showing up for next year, but we can give you the details at a later date.
Thank you. I think the one item to mention is that we have canceled the January 2nd hearing in light of staff furloughs, and so our first meeting of next year will be the 9th of January. This is the point in the meeting when we invite members of the public to address the Commission on matters not on our agenda for the day. So, we encourage people to address us on anything they feel is within the jurisdiction or contemplation of the Planning Commission. Do we have any speaker slips, Commissioner Blau?
No, we do not.
Okay. And I haven't heard about any from the North County, so we will move on then to Planning Commissioner informational reports.
Uh-uh.
Do we have any anything from any of the Planning Commissioners? For Commissioner Hartman, as you've watched our proceedings, you're probably aware this is the opportunity for each of us to mention things that might have arisen in our respective districts or experience that you might want to share with the rest of the Commissioners. Okay, so that takes us down to the Director's Report, and again, we have Dr. Russell. Glad to have you, as always.
Good morning, Chair Cooney Commissioners. Welcome, Commissioner Hartman. Today, I have a very brief report. We'll get on to the Agenda items that really count for something. The only hearing that took place since your last hearing was the Board of Supervisors hearing of yesterday. There were a few items. We set the Orkut Community Plan for hearing in early December. We renewed a contract with the City of Galita to provide energy planning services with the onshore oil facilities that support the offshore platforms. We reappointed the Summerland PAC, the SUN PAC, for another year. And finally, the Goolsby and K. Goolsby-K appeal of the Monacito, Summerland, the Monacito decision on the Verizon cell site. That was continued now into March of next year because it appears that there is a consensus as to a approach that will be acceptable to the appellant's, as well as Verizon will require the processing of a new application for a different type of facility than was originally proposed. So, we're looking forward to receiving that application and hopefully achieving consensus on that appeal. That's what I have for you today.
Commissioners, any questions of Dr. Russell? Thank you. Thank you very much for catching us up, and certainly, our cell tower review process is ongoing, and we're going to get a firsthand opportunity ourselves today. So, we have one consent item, but before we turn to that, can we have a motion to continue item number one, the Youngman Ordinance Amendments Amendment Initiation? And I guess we should technically read it into the record first, Mr. Villalobos.
I move, Mr. Chair. And I'll second it once it's read.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The following is a hearing on the request of John Burrell, agent for Patricia Youngman, for initiation of an ordinance amendment, case number 11, ORD 16, application filed on June 16, 2011, to amend text in section 35.42.042, the agricultural processing facilities in Article 35.11 of the Land, County's Land Use and Development Code, Chapter 35.
Thank you. Okay. We have a motion from Commissioner Valencia, seconded by Commissioner Blau. Is there any public comment on this item, the continued item number one, the Youngman Ordinance? Not seeing any. Any further discussion by the Commission on this motion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No. Okay, that's unanimous. So, we have item C1. We'll take that up, and then, before we continue with our regular agenda, we'll take a brief break for everyone to set up. Mr. Villalobos, will you read C1 into the record?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. The following is a hearing on the request of Ron Carlantini, manager of the Office of Real Estate Services, General Services Department, consider case number 12, GOV 23, application filed on October 22, 2012, for the determination at the proposed acceptance of the Alexander Land donation for in-fee ownership of a 1.5 acre property to be used as a public park by the County of Santa Barbara is in conformity with the comprehensive plan of the County of Santa Barbara pursuant to Government Code, Section 65402A.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, are there any site visits with respect to this project? Commissioner Hartman?
Visit, yes.
Commissioner Hartman, the practice we have, the informal practice, is that if there's a consent item on, the Commissioner from that district always has the option of asking for a brief hearing on the matter. I don't know if you've considered this and feel that's necessary, or whether it's.
I don't think it's necessary. Thank you.
Okay. Would you like to make a motion, then?
I move that we find this in conformity. Is that the?
It's on page four, what you should read.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I move the staff recommendation. Thank you for the assistance.
Mr. Chair.
Hold on just one second. Let me see if there's a second.
I'll second.
All right. We have a second from Commissioner Blau. Yes?
I just want to make sure we check to see if there's any public comment before we take a vote on that.
Okay. Was anyone here for item C2 that wished to address the Commission? Don't see anyone. So, we're back to our motion. We have a motion from Commissioner Hartman, seconded by Commissioner Blau. Any further discussion from the Commission on item C2? This is a land donation conformity request. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposition? No abstentions, so that carries unanimously. Okay. We will move to item number two on our agenda, which is the agricultural buffer ordinance in five minutes. We're back on the record. This is the Planning Commission, Santa Barbara County Planning Commission Meeting of the 14th of November, 2012, and we have reached item two on our agenda, the agricultural buffer ordinance. Mr. Villalobos, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The following is a hearing on the request of the Planning and Development Department, that the County Planning Commission, A, adopt a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors, that the Board adopt an ordinance, case number 12, ORD 11; B, adopt a recommendation to the, adopt a recommendation to the, recommend to the Board of Supervisors, that the Board of Supervisors adopt an ordinance, case number 12, RD 13; and to recommend that the Board of Supervisors adopt the final negative declaration, 11 NGD4 pursuant to the state guidelines for the implementation of the California Environmental Quality Act.
Thank you, Mr. Villalobos. Commissioners, any ex parte communications you wish to disclose? Okay. So, we have Ms. Stark today. Welcome. And are you going to start, Jeff?
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, just briefly, I'll give an opening. Good morning. I'm Jeff Hunt, Deputy Director of Long Range Planning, and with me is David Lackey, a supervising planner, and of course, Stephanie Stark, the project planner for the agricultural buffer ordinance. We're returning to the Planning Commission from your October meeting, where you asked a number of questions and issues were raised, and in response to that, staff is proposing some revisions or refinements, is what I would, how I would describe these revisions. It's certainly not a wholesale overhaul of the ordinance. First, staff will present some revisions that are new to you. They will be in the PowerPoint that Stephanie's going to give, and then Stephanie will also address the staff report. Actually, she'll address the staff report revisions, and then she'll add several new revisions in addition to those that are in the staff report, in that order. And so, we would ask that you hold your questions until she's gotten through her presentation, and then we have electronic versions of any of the language that you'd like to address more specifically. And with that, I'll turn it over to Stephanie.
Good morning, Chair Cooney and members of the Commission. As Jeff has indicated today, staff's requesting that the County Planning Commission review and provide recommendations to the Board regarding the agricultural buffer ordinance. The ordinance would apply countywide, therefore, before you are two cases. One is to amend the County Land Use Development Code for the inland areas of the county, and the other is to amend Article II, the coastal zoning ordinance. The agricultural buffer ordinance before you today is a continued item from the October 3rd hearing. At the October hearing, the Commission raised comments and questions about the proposed ordinance and directed staff to research some of the issues and propose revisions to the language of the ordinance as appropriate. Staff considered all the comments, and based on research, staff's proposing revisions to the ordinance, which are the following. Well, these are the, first I mean to say, these are the summary of comments from the October 3rd hearing, and they include existing single-family dwellings that are located within the buffer and modifications to those single-family dwellings or structures within the buffer. Agricultural-related industrial projects, buffer width when both kinds of agriculture are present, meaning rangeland, pastureland, as well as production agriculture. Vegetative screening requirements, landscape lighting irrigation plan requirements, buffer recordation requirements, the site design section in the guidelines, potential effects on the LAFCO annexation and consistency with the Galita Valley Community Plan update for the eastern Galita Valley area, and the public noticing for the project. Staff considered the comments and questions for the October 3rd hearing, and based on additional research, we're proposing the following revisions to the ordinance. One, we addressed the exemption for existing dwellings and modifications to the dwellings. We also added language to address when both types of agriculture, meaning production agriculture as well as rangeland, pastureland, are present. We revised the vegetative screening requirement. We revised the landscape lighting irrigation plan. We required a notice to property owner instead of using a conservation easement or deed restriction language in the ordinance. We revised the site design section of the agricultural buffer implementation guidelines, and we included in the proposed policies in the Galita Valley Community Plan update. We also added oil and gas facilities as an allowable use within the buffer and a few other minor edits. The proposed language for the Land Use Development Code in Article II coastal zoning ordinance are contained in the staff report. And in addition to address the question about noticing of the hearing, so in addition to the standard public notice that was provided during the October 3rd hearing, we also emailed a press release to all the major newspapers, as well as Ed Hat, and a list of interested persons that we have for this particular project, and we also put it on our website. So, in addition to the proposed language revisions that were contained in the staff report, staff is also proposing to make three additional revisions that are not contained in the staff report. And before you is, are some color copies of this proposed language, so that you have this, these are, they're copies of the slides I'm about to show. There's three of them. And this first proposal is that staff recommends to revise section E, the allowable uses within agricultural buffers, to show, as the underline shows in the new text, and the strikeout is the proposed, we're proposing to remove that from the ordinance. So, this revision says that the property owner shall use its best efforts to consult with the adjacent agricultural landowner, rather than saying the agriculture, the adjacent agricultural landowner shall be consulted. We felt like this would address issues where the adjacent landowner, they were trying to contact them, but they weren't, were unable to do so for some reason. It allows a little bit of flexibility in there, like perhaps one of the landowners is out of town for an extended period of time, or maybe they're not on the best of terms, and they don't want to consult. This is the second additional revision, and this shows in, the red is showing the proposed change that's different than what's contained in the staff report. So, this is an amendment to section C under exceptions, and the underlined section is what's shown in the staff report already, so I'm just working off of that. And this change is showing in red, rather, this is a minor change, just to clarify. So, when it says "single-family dwellings, residential second units, residential accessory structures," provided that the structure is either located on, rather than saying just an additional, an existing lot, we're saying a lot existing as of effective date of this ordinance. This is just being consistent with B as well, which has that caveat. And this is a second, or excuse me, a third revision, and this is to section D1 under agricultural buffer requirements. And again, the red is what's different than what's shown in the staff report. So, the difference is saying that the range of the agricultural buffer width shall be as follows, and what we're addressing here is issues where the adjacent agriculture contains both production agriculture as well as rangeland, pastureland. We're trying to be clear without, we can't kind of predict every single situation, but we're trying to give more guidance or more direction, clear direction, the ordinance. So, what we're striking is this language here shown, I'll use my cursor. We're striking this section in, shown right here, and we're adding, if the proposed project's located adjacent to a lot that contains both production ag, rangeland or pastureland, most protective buffer shall be applied to any portion of the common lot where production ag is immediately adjacent, and this additional text may be applied to the common lot, common lot line where production ag is not immediately adjacent, based on consideration of the extent of production ag and the distance of the production ag from the proposed project and the site-specific factors specified in subsection D4A. So, although staff researched and carefully considered all the comments and questions that were discussed during the October 3rd hearing, there were some that we did not feel warranted a revision to the ordinance, and these include exempting agriculture-related industrial uses, limiting the buffer width to more, no more than half the width of the non-agricultural lot, and the potential effect the ordinance could have on future annexations. So, we had, we researched it, but based on this, we didn't feel that the, any were proposed revisions were appropriate. The requested, this Commission also requested staff research potential effect the ordinance would have on approved projects that may request a modification to their project. The two examples mentioned during the hearing were Legacy Estates and Rice Ranch. If an approved project such as Rice Ranch or Legacy Estates were to come in, they request a modification that required a discretionary action, the project would be subject to the agricultural buffer ordinance. So, to review, staff's recommendation for amendments to the County Land Use Development Code is that your Commission follow the recommendations procedures outlined in section two of the staff report. The required findings for the project, including CQ findings, included as attachment A of the staff report. The negative declaration included as attachment F of the staff report. The resolution recommending the Board adopt the case included as attachment B of the staff report. For Article II, the coastal zoning ordinance, staff's recommending the required findings for the project, including CQ findings, are included as attachment C of the staff report. The notice of exemption included as attachment D, and the resolution regarding, recommending the Board adopt the case included as attachment E of the staff report. And this concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions a Commission may have.
Thank you very much. Ms. Stark, questions from Commissioners, Commissioner Blau?
Yeah, one of the things that you had on your first bullet list was the issue of deed restrictions or easements. I know I raised that issue at the last hearing. I need to see an example of a deed restriction that you're going to place on there. My little bit of research I did with my chief toddler officer, who I have great faith in, had a real problem with that, and I think I have the same problem with it. Easements I don't have a problem with, but deed restrictions, I have a, perhaps a real problem with it. No, they're proposing to have deed restrictions on the land. That's what part of their PowerPoint was.
It's been revised.
Oh, I'm sorry. I saw it up there on your list, and you took it out? Okay.
Commissioner Cooney, Commissioner Blau, yes. To clarify, we included as a bullet point that we are addressing buffer recordation, but in what were we, your comments were very, very astute, and we really researched that and looked into it, and so what we did is.
Then I misunderstood your first slide. I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay.
That's my problem. I thought you still had those issues in there.
We removed the reference to the deed restriction and conservation easement. We're using a different mechanism for that, and we, I can discuss that if you'd like.
Please. I think it's important for Commissioner Blau to have input on that, if he hasn't had a chance to consider it yet.
So, I call the Commissioners' attention to page nine of the staff report. So I call the Commissioners' attention to page nine of the staff report, Section And what this does is addresses, we looked, we researched it, and what we felt was that we had referred to a conservation easement and then, or a deed restriction, and for the conservation easement component, we, what we realized was, well, a couple of things. One is for, it's not really a conservation easement, it might possibly be called an ag buffer easement, but the issue is that that would have to be held by a third party, and that just didn't seem like a very likely scenario. Currently, the county doesn't have a program to manage easements, so we didn't want to reinvent, or invent a new program, we wanted to use something that's already established and is an efficient process in the county. We also looked at a deed restriction, and we felt like maybe a better approach might be to consider as part of the project, a condition on the project, saying that this land has a agricultural buffer on it, and then, within the title of the property, that will have a notice to property owner, that will run with the land, it'll be on the title of the property saying, "You have a agricultural buffer on your property, here's the requirements for the buffer, here's what the obligations are for the landowner to maintain the buffer, et cetera," so then that would be clear to the next landowner. So we chose to go with those two mechanisms. And in addition, for projects such as a lot line adjustment or a tentative parcel map that would have a site plan, we wanted to include something on the second page that was called like the informational sheet, a statement on there about the agricultural buffer as well. So we mentioned that in the staff report, and so on page nine, at the, on Section 5, the last sentence, I refer to here, that this would require an amendment to Chapter 21, the Land Division subdivision regulations of the County Code regulating permits, so we'd have to do an amendment to the subdivision regulations of the county, and that would occur, that specific language, we'd have to draft that up before we go to the Board of Supervisors.
Commissioner Blau, are you-
Yeah, that's great. The only other thing that might, you want to do is that on the track maps or the lot line adjustment maps is to indicate on the map itself easement. That's where it's going to be picked up by other future property owners. It's great to have a narrative if you want to put an information sheet, but it needs to show on the map itself, like you would have, like a no build easement, or it would be the same kind of a deal on the map itself, yeah.
Commissioner Blau, yes, that, that's a good suggestion. We'll have that depicted specifically, graphically on the, on the, on the plans.
But I think also what Commissioner Blau's suggesting is that there be a written reference to the existence of the buffer area, which would otherwise be depicted on the map. I think everybody will pick up on it pretty fast, but it's, it's certainly the best way to communicate from owner to owner what, what the property is burdened by.
Thank you for the suggestion.
Commissioner Valencia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. What happens after five years on the maintenance requirement minimum?
Commissioner Valencia, you referring to the, the, after the landscaping's been installed, the performance security, is that what you're asking about?
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, this language is very similar to language that are, exists in our zoning ordinance, and traditionally what happens is, up to the five-year period, there'll be periodic inspections to see if the landscaping has taken hold and is flourishing. If not, then staff will work with the property owner to reestablish the landscaping. After a five-year period, then we return whatever bond is, or whatever security has been posted, and it's, it's rare that we've ever had to use that security, it's, it's just more leverage.
You could theoretically let it go to weeds then after five years?
In, in theory.
All right, thank you.
Other questions? Commissioner Hartman?
I had a question about the landscape lighting and irrigation plan. There are situations where an owner would not need any of those, right?
Commissioner Hartman, that, that's correct. So to clarify, the landscape lighting irrigation plan itself is required, however, we're not requiring that every project is, the project may have landscaping, but it may not be necessarily proposed because of the agricultural buffer. So that's up to the, the project specifically. And then some projects which have the option that may use the vegetative screening option, that would be considered landscaping as well. So the plans require, but not necessarily landscaping, lighting, or irrigation.
I just wondered, it was a little confusing to me, it seems a bit of a misnomer, and if it might not be a buffer design plan, or there might not be another label for it that better communicates what it, what its purpose is.
So maybe a buffer design plan, something less descriptive maybe, so that's clear. Thank you for the suggestion, we can incorporate that.
Other questions from Commissioners? I'll ask one at this point. With respect to the allowable uses, Ms. Stark, which begin in the staff report on page 10, there's discussion of a number of things that can be done with unrestricted ability, and in that list, Item C says, "Low-lying landscaping and vegetative screening that does not include trees or tall hedges." Now, I know you've looked at this very carefully, but I, I have a concern from a legal standpoint as to the vagueness of the word "tall." In other words, what might be tall to those of us who aren't real tall, might be different to, to professional basketball players. So I, I think we ought to, if we're going to allow, or exclude from the, the allowed use, tall hedges, we ought to define it in some way that isn't subject to litigation later on.
Ms. Cooney, thank you for that comment. Yes, that's a, a good point, we can clarify that further, either with a distance or a height specifically perhaps. I could look at, to see what we might have already in our landscaping plan requirements and other-
I think there's lots of precedent in the county codes-
Yes, mhm.
-for defining that in the, in the various plans, all kinds of places. Not to say that they're consistent, but pick one. In that same, Section 1, Item C, is it correct that the contemplation is that if there's a creek, a lake, a stream, a river, in the ag buffer, that there wouldn't be any restriction on that being maintained within the area? In other words, let's say I, I have a new home, and I'm building it in the midst of an ag, an active ag area, production agriculture, and I want to put in a pond in my backyard. This suggests that I'm free to do that, but my concern is that one of the real purposes of the ag buffer in the first place is to avoid contamination of the non-ag property by ag operations. So, you know, a blanket exclusion for waterways, I think, may pick up sources of, or at least victims of contamination in artificial waterways. I can understand you don't want people to have to move a creek, but, but there are in the San Andres Valley, for example, lots of properties with, with artificial reservoirs or water storage areas, and it's, it's even getting more popular on the South Coast.
So maybe include some kind of statement in there about not, yeah, we, clarify that we mean natural waterways?
I think that's the direction.
Yes.
I, I haven't thought of the solution, I'm, I'm just raising the concern for staff's further thought, to distinguish between natural and unnatural waterways.
Yes. In particular, they're using the water for drinking water, yeah.
Even animal-
Yes, mhm.
-water sources, you know, and we live in a semi-desert, so water sources are a big deal, and, and we want to protect the, the users of stored water.
Thank you for that suggestion.
I had a couple of other comments, but I'll save them so we can hear from the public and get started with our group of public speakers, several of which are in the North County. We'll call first on Hank Blanco, I believe is up there, and he'll be followed by Claire Wineman, or maybe it's Weinman. Good morning, Mr. Blanco.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, staff, and welcome to Commissioner Hartman. I am here representing myself. I've formerly used the terrific firm of Urban Planning Concepts to help me go through the waters on these projects, but with the economic times of where they are, we can't even afford to pay a great firm like theirs to help me make sure we get some clarity on the potential impact that, devastating impact, I should say, that this great buffer ordinance could have on the Legacy Estates project. This is a project that belongs to my family, primarily my three girls. I'm a retired farmer myself, I, we farm this property, and we run cattle and, and farm in other areas here in the North County and grow grapes, and we just, you know, integrate it into the agricultural life here. And overall, I want to go on the record as saying that I think this, this is a great ordinance. And I primarily have a, a question for all of you regarding the potential impact I, I think that this would have on us. And I have tried to visit with, and/or speak, or email, a couple of maps that would give you a quick overview and understanding of the Legacy Estates project, if you haven't already had the time, and I believe Commissioner Valencia is quite familiar with it, and Commissioner Blau, I think, I understand, is also familiar with it, but I want to make sure that, I don't want to waste your time in going over certain points about it, I could proceed right to my question, if that's preferable, or I can give you some background on what we did to design this project, to create a buffer. It's a, it's an approved project, it's a tentative map, and so I could proceed one way or the other, whichever is most expeditious for today's session.
Well, it's your time, of course, Mr. Blanco, but I think it's fine to proceed with a question. We, we would be able to refer that to staff a little bit later in the hearing, and perhaps even have initial response.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, Commissioner. Mr. Chairman, basically, and by the way, we did fax a, I don't know if it's very legible, but we had a couple of these facts, if any, if you want to see a copy of that, we just faxed it over a few minutes ago. This is a project that we did a lot of work on, starting 2003, 2004, and then when the economy tanked, we found ourselves, like many other people, just sitting and waiting and land banking this and paying, you know, all of our property taxes on all of this. And it's still too early to say that, that we, you know, think that it can get, somebody's going to come along and buy it, a developer, and build homes there, and finish out that beautiful part of downtown, of Los Alamos. My question basically is this, if this buffer, if this agricultural buffer ordinance goes through, and the next owner of this property is asked to modify or redesign, let's say, for example, the fire department wants six inches more on each curb, a little bit wider road, and therefore calls for a review and redesign of the project to just get something that's fairly minor. I don't think there's going to be anything major required, because we have a number of great things planned into this project. If that were to happen, would that person be subject to this anticipated agricultural buffer ordinance?
Okay, good. We'll, we'll have staff think about that while we go through the public hearing and, and get their response in a few minutes.
Okay.
Anything to add?
Well, the, the only thing I wanted to add, which is probably not obvious from the first cursory view of this project, is that, together with Penfield and Smith and staff, we worked very hard to address a utilitarian benefit beyond that, that is given to the project, by putting in a drainage system and an, that is on the perimeter of this project. If you were to be familiar with the map, you would see it. That, that would have, that's in the, in the buffer zone of what I would call the ag road that surrounds the project, and that is part of a, an EIR also that we did to get over to San Antonio Creek, that gives not only great benefit to the surrounding homes, the new homes, the 59-lot subdivision that would be created, but also to some of the drainage requirements in Los Alamos on the, on the north side of Bell Street as well. That elliptical pipe was oversized at our expense and our recommendation that would give the, the community a really great drainage solution for the future, and this would include anything out of Drum Canyon, and of course, any of the current flooding problems that that area has experienced at times, so we addressed all of that. It's a very subtle, but it's a very important issue, because that would, you know, obviously probably wiped, be wiped out by this ordinance. So with that, unless you have some questions about it, I have a lot more detail about it that I could add, but I, I'll, I'll just sit down and see if there's some questions of me later on.
Good. Thank you very much, Mr. Blanco.
Thank you very much for your time.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners and staff and members of the public. Thank you again for the opportunity to come before you. My name is Claire Weinman, and I'm here today representing the Grower/Shipper Association of Santa Barbara and San Luis Obispo Counties. We represent a variety of farmers in Santa Barbara and San Luis Obispo Counties that are both landowners and operators on many of the lands that would be impacted by this ordinance. I'd like to express our continued support for this policy and reiterate the importance of this to the future of agriculture and its need. It's absolutely vital to protecting the future of ag in this county. I also wanted to clarify some items of confusion that came up in the last hearing. First of all, I'd like to make sure that it's clear that buffer policies benefit more than just the agriculturalists. It also benefits the homeowners and other neighbors. It allows full enjoyment of those future property owners, and so, again, I think it's important to remember that it's not just the agriculturalists who are benefiting it, but by anticipating and reducing conflict, it has a much broader impact and benefit. Additionally, all of the government officials and agency officials who would be receiving potential complaints from the lack of a buffer and the inevitable conflicts arising from that, diverts resources from other important initiatives, and so, again, just to recap, it's, it benefits the broader community. Also, I wanted to clarify that the buffer benefits more than just pesticides, there's been a lot of focus on that, but there's a variety of impacts that can be mitigated through the buffer. Ag in this county is 24/7 and 365 days per year. We have growers who are literally planning every week out of the year. I wanted to give a specific example or two. One example is noise. For example, if a farmer already has their well drilled, it's very difficult to relocate that, it's a complex process, and I had one member tell me that on one occasion, they had their pump running, and the neighbor thought that it was too loud, and so they went and turned it off, resulting in tens of thousands of dollars of damage. And so, again, it's not just a matter of pesticides. Another example is light. Sometimes things have to occur at night because of the wind and other environmental conditions that are difficult to control, and so that's why it can be difficult to do things just during the day, and, again, that's why it's important to have a buffer to reduce the variety of potential conflicts between the agricultural and non-agricultural adjoining users. So in conclusion, I urge you again to adopt the recommendation to the Board of Supervisors to move this policy forward, and thank you for your consideration.
And thank you for your help, Ms. Weinman. Our next speaker is Susan Petrovich, she'll be followed by John Peterson, both of whom- She'll be followed by John Peterson, both of whom are here in Santa Barbara.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dave, could you put my little short PowerPoint up? Mr. Chair, Members of the Commission, my name is Susan Petrovich. I'm with the law firm of Brownstein Hyatt Farber Shrek, and I'm here representing Santinaz Valley Properties, the owner of a parcel that is impacted by this ordinance. I would like to start by saying it's a great pleasure to meet Commissioner Hartman. It's especially, I'm especially happy to see her here for such an important issue for ag. Obviously, ag is a major industry in her district, and it's great to have you here and not have us miss a hearing. Thank you. Oh, thanks. Yeah, that's great. Thank you. This first slide I presented last time, and I just, I wanted to remind you that this is a long, narrow parcel. There's a much more intense residential project to the north. This parcel is only 381 feet wide. To the south is a horse operation, and this better depicts the neighborhood to the north. And then, of course, where the green is, is this long, narrow parcel. And as you can see, just to the south, there are small, and I pass this out so you could probably, so you can get a better look at these paddocks, because these are smaller-sized paddocks. They're not, this is not entirely grazing land. The area to the west on this property is grazing land, but to the east are paddocks. When the staff moved from the implementation guidelines to the ordinance, language to clarify the purpose or how you determine the range, what part of the range you use, they left this sentence out. This was the immediately preceding sentence to what they imported into the ordinance. And I guess my question is, if the other language is important to clarify the ordinance, why wasn't this included? Because frankly, the ordinance does not provide us with any standard for determining where in this wide range of setback or buffer you put a particular property. So I would suggest that, and Ms. Stark explained to me, that this was the intent, was the minimum buffer would apply to most situations, and then you'd go up to, up from there if the situation warranted it, but you would not exceed the maximum of the range. So that makes sense, so I would ask that this be added. I also ask that either you add horse operations here in the explanation of the, where, when the buffer applies and how it's adjusted, or that you include either the term confined animal keeping in your definition of rangeland or pastureland, or, I was talking to Stephanie this morning, maybe even the word just livestock, because she explained to me that when the term grazing animals was intended to apply to animals that graze. The trouble is, I was reading it as animals out there actually eating, eating grass or eating forage in an open grazing area. So obviously, it has two different interpretations. So I thought, well, maybe we could get rid of grazing animals and just use livestock, because that would apply to all livestock, and that would be agricultural. And I think that's it. Yes, I have nothing further. Does anyone have any questions of me?
I don't see any.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Peterson. Mr. Peterson will be followed by Christina McGinnis and then Francis Romero in the North County.
Good morning, and thank you. Welcome to Commissioner Hartman. We've met before with activities within Boulton. As I said, I'm John Peterson. I'm the, an owner and resident on a parcel on Refugio Road that our attorney, Susan Petrovich, just spoke to, and here today out of concern. A little history, I've lived on this piece of property pretty much most of my life. My parents built there somewhere around 1960. It was a good central location as we were farming throughout the Santinaz Valley. In fact, much of what we can see out our windows today was property that we did farm at one point in time. Ultimately, and I have a great deal of empathy for the agricultural community, one of the things led to me getting out of agriculture were the conflicts that we did encounter. And so I support the concept of this ordinance. We need these sort of things. I appreciate the consideration that's been given already as the interchange between Ms. Stark and ourselves regarding some of the provisions within the ordinance. There are, however, a certain sense of what is reasonable and fair. As Ms. Petrovich mentioned, we have a parcel here that is by the plot 381 feet wide. We have a situation, a range of buffers that ranges from, at approximately 100 feet, depending on, in production agriculture, up to 300 feet in width, leaving us about 81 feet left at that point. Not a real feasible. So it's a considerable taking of the property, should that occur. One of the proposals that was made is to work a formula of that, of which no more than 50% be taken or allocated as buffer on the space. What we are looking for is the ability to have, use this property for the purposes as it is presently zoned, which in this case is 1E1. Excuse me. So again, while I do empathize with the concerns, and I still consider myself something of an agriculturalist, even though I've been out of it for 30 years, I do sympathize, I do understand, I do agree. We simply need to look at these parcels that have somewhat unusual situations by their size and dimensions, and that's what we're asking for here today. Thank you.
Thanks for coming, Mr. Peterson. Good morning, Ms. McGinnis.
Good morning, Chair Cooney and Commissioners, and very warm welcome to Commissioner Hartman. Great to see you up there. And this morning, I come with a bit of a different feeling, because last night I was at a hearing up in the city of Guadalupe, and there was a project being reviewed up there called the DJ Farms Specific Plan Project. And the owner had come in with a modification to the project, to the specific plan, which was actually something that had been requested by LAFCO. And one of the major modifications that had been requested was to take away a buffer that was originally included as part of that specific plan. And that city up there is hurting economically and is looking for expansion opportunities, which is understandable. However, at one point during the hearing, you know, they had requested information about what the scenario was in terms of Santa Barbara County's buffer policy. And because this buffer ordinance is not yet in place, they actually reduced the buffer on that project to less than 100 feet in some cases, and it's adjacent to very productive agricultural land on almost all sides of the project. And they're also including a school right up next to this productive agricultural land. So I felt very, very frustrated that this was able to occur. They actually did ask the question, and had we had this ordinance in place, perhaps these changes would not have occurred. So I'd like to speak today just about the urgency and the need for this ordinance to move forward, and I do sincerely appreciate staff's efforts with this ordinance and moving it forward, and I hope to see that this move forward to the Board of Supervisors as quickly as possible. I do support the changes that were made, both by staff and by some of the Commissioners' suggestions. I think they make good sense. And I, on behalf of the Ag Futures Alliance, which I'm also a member of, and we worked very hard on this buffer policy several years ago, we look forward to seeing this get implemented. So thank you very much.
Thank you for coming, Ms. McGinnis. Francis Romero, Mayor Romero. Are you in the North County, Francis?
Thank you, Chair Cooney. Good morning, Commissioners, and welcome to Commissioner Hartman. Good to have you here. I'm here today, I work for Urban Planning Concepts, and I'd like to read some of Lori Tamura's comments into the record. She did make a submittal, but we're not sure if you received it or not. She reviewed the agricultural buffer ordinance and believes that staff has adequately addressed the points discussed in the staff report. However, there is still one fundamental problem with the agricultural buffer ordinance. It ties right back to the goals of regional planning and infill development. The staff did not address the questions about the approved community plans and how the red line and yellow line impact land values. Here are her suggestions for the North County community plans. Orchid East Side. There is no need to have any buffer designation on the east side of Orchid, as the map clearly illustrates US Highway 101, and the existing roads and walls already provide adequate buffer along the east side, and there is no reason to place an added liability on one row of homes within Orchid that they are not aware of. Key Site 3 is far enough away to not need this buffer designation. Staff has not clearly indicated what would happen if the two major commercial sites, Key Site 1 and 2, if they also need to provide a buffer. Please remove this red line from the east side of Orchid. On the south side of Orchid, the Rice Ranch Specific Plan and the Orchid Community Plan had a 100-foot buffer along the southern property line, which was adopted by the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors. The buffer was established because of the hilly terrain, poor soil type, lack of water availability, and the historic grazing and oil activity on the property to the south. Ironically, the County of Santa Barbara Parks Department has accepted and now owns 365 acres of open space, the 26-acre Orchid Community Park, and six miles of trails in the Rice Ranch Specific Plan area that are now going to be inconsistent with the agricultural buffer ordinance. So what is the point of placing the ag buffer on this county-owned land? The Rice Ranch Specific Plan is in the process, and we are designating portions of the project to be consistent with the Orchid Community Plan and the Rice Ranch Specific Plan as it is currently written, not the agricultural buffer ordinance. We request that the Rice Ranch Specific Plan be exempt from the agricultural buffer ordinance and that it be held to the originally applied 100-foot buffer from the Orchid Community Plan. Last comment, in Los Alamos, there are several blocks into the township, including Legacy Estates and another approved project that are now impacted by this buffer. After spending millions of dollars on the Los Alamos community plan, why would the county propose to go back in and strip development potential away from potential infill properties? This is clearly a conflict of county goals, and we just ask that you would consider existing projects and the items that people have relied on. People rely on community plans. The Orchid Community Plan alone, there were hundreds of hearings, and people provided input, and we just ask that you consider all of their time and efforts. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any additional speakers? That was the last speaker slip. Don't see anyone else in Santa Barbara. So let's come back to staff and see if there's any reaction to the points raised by the public speakers. What about, for example, the existing approved development plans, such as Legacy Estates
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, essentially, the way the code is proposed is the buffer would only apply to new discretionary developments, so any project that has already received its discretionary approval would not be subject to the buffer. So we, the buffer would not be applied to any existing development unless that existing development came in for a revision, which was discretionary. Then the way the code is proposed, then that would trigger a review and potential application of the buffer. And staff isn't comfortable speculating on specifics, specific projects and implications for specific projects.
Well, I think we need to take advantage of the hearing today to specify some of the exclusions that are there naturally, because we're picking up today in midstream. We've already had one hearing, but I think that's an important distinction, that we're only talking about discretionary projects which are proposed in the future. And so if there is an existence, an approved project, the buffer ordinance, if it's planned to be developed as, as has already been approved, there's not going to be an additional buffer ordinance in the taking of, taking is the wrong word, the adding of a new restriction within the buffer area applied to that property. Commissioner Blau?
Yeah, I don't think that's actually totally accurate. By example, we know that Rice Ranch is coming back to us, they're taking out their condos, I think, and the two-story elements within the project, and doing more single-story different housing product, because the housing product they tried to design 10 years ago doesn't meet today's market. So with that change, as I read this ordinance, they are subject to the two ordinance, because we are modifying their project. It's a new discretionary permit that we're giving to them, so they would be subject to it. And I think, we even heard in our last meeting from Diane, that a lot line adjustment makes the project subject to discretionary permits. So, for example, we've got the typical Santinaz property where the lot line runs through the middle of the house built 60 years ago, and they want to move the lot line over five or 10 feet so that the, now we have two parcels, we don't have this encroachment on the property lines. That lot line adjustment's now going to be subject to this new ordinance, and if they're adjacent to an agricultural project, it's now 100 feet is the absolute minimum. So I think the concern about the fact that existing approved projects or existing community plans are now going to be, those properties are going to be subject to this ordinance, and people are not going to get what they think they were going to get. That's, I think, the concern. Am I correct about that?
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, you are correct in the conclusion that if a existing project that has already received its discretionary approval were to come back in for a modification that was discretionary, then that would trigger conformance with the ordinance as it's written.
And this ordinance is not something that we can sit here as Commissioners and say, okay, well, that 100-foot buffer is not necessary, because the way the ordinance is written, there's no discretion on our part. If we, if they come in before discretionary permit and they're adjacent agriculture, we have to impose a 100-foot or ag buffer. We don't have the discretion to say it's not necessary in that case. Am I correct?
The ordinance, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, the ordinance as proposed does not have an exemption in that particular case. There are other particular exemptions, and we can go through those, but you're correct in the sense that there may be instances where it's triggered, and the minimum buffer is 100 feet as the ordinance is proposed.
Commissioner Brown, I saw you for a minute.
I'm trying to think this thing through, and what I don't, and I appreciate the difficulty and the situation that Commissioner Blau brings forth, and I have two thoughts, is that, one, we're never going to be able to capture all the situations in the future that may occur. Secondly, it seems that, while I appreciate this, it's the should versus shall, that we may not, it's difficult to have a buffer ordinance where you might add language which would sort of minimize the intent or the effects of what is being proposed here. So for staff, it's sort of a tricky balancing act, I would guess, of how you might be able to look at future difficulties where the Commission's hands would be tied that says, no, it'd only, it'd only be one thing, but it may be prudent to put something in that says, okay, you're bound by this, but we understand- you're bound by this, but we understand that it's kind of a funky situation like this one that Commissioner Blau pointed out with the property line going through the house, that it could be exempted, or there could be some sort of modification that would allow the commission to make some decision that would be beneficial to the property owner, but also to the adjacent ag. I don't know, maybe that's a task that's not doable, I don't know, but something to think about.
Are you suggesting that there be some escape hatch so that the commission, the county can apply an exception to the buffer policy on a case-by-case basis?
Well, it might be prudent, but I realize the hazards in doing that. It diminishes the effectiveness of what you're trying to do, but on the other hand, there may be situations which are, I think Commissioner Blau brought up one here, that we've seen that, where the property line goes through the house, and that if the commission didn't have that sort of wiggle room, it's oh, well, and I think the commission probably needs some wiggle room, but I don't know, I'd like to hear staff or council weigh in on this issue. I think that'd be important for us to hear from them specifically.
If I could offer a suggestion.
Commissioner Blau.
If I could offer a suggestion, that I think would take care of at least the Rice Ranch property and anybody else that has an approved project, if we could talk about where they would not be subject to the ordinance for minor modifications to existing approved discretionary permitted plans. And the idea being that if Rice Ranch were to come in and say, look, we've got 360 units, we're going to do 340, and they're going to be smaller, that would, that doesn't, that should not trigger further environmental review, or shouldn't trigger necessarily this ordinance. Now, they already have a buffer, we've talked about that issue before, but now the other project, I think he has a serious problem, because he's adjacent to agriculture and there is no buffer in here, so I think this could actually destroy the economic value of this subdivision. But again, if we're talking about minor modifications to his plan where it doesn't increase the number of units, and it's just simply a minor modification, that we don't have to apply the, we don't have to apply the new ordinance. Is that possible, as I guess, and I think that's, I think that's reasonable. We've got people who spend literally tens of thousands or hundreds of thousands of dollars to get these projects approved, and, you know, for example, on Rice Ranch, they can't build moderate force, need-restricted housing. That's part of their permitted process. There's no such lender that would loan on that today, so they have no choice but to get their project amended. But should that trigger a complete redesign and application of an issue that's already been thoroughly addressed when they went through their initial approval process?
While it seems to me we have a potential division on the commission as to, an exception for approved projects and having to define what's a minor adjustment, as opposed to a broader suggestion I heard in the reaction of Commissioner Brown to allow some discretion on a project-by-project basis, which would allow the Planning Commission and the staff the opportunity to look at, say, a Rice Ranch modification or a legacy estates modification, and indicate, based on those facts, whether there should be an exception to the buffer rule. And I frankly am leaning more toward Commissioner Brown, rather than try and identify all the projects or the term minor.
Right.
If they come in for a discretionary modification, it should be treated as any other discretionary permit, but I don't like having the hands of ourselves or a future commission tied totally to this transition period while the ordinance is being implemented. It's one thing if you have two vacant properties and you're starting from scratch, but we're plunking this ordinance down in the midst of existing development, trying to be reasonable. So those are the two points of view I hear having emerged so far, but let's hear from the rest. Commissioner Valencia.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I've always thought that the commission was here to use a little common sense on some of these rules. It's impossible to come up with a rule that covers all aspects of what comes up in these land transactions and modifications and revisions, and some discretion, no matter how minute, should always be available to the commission to correct things, as today the staff brought in some revisions and modifications to what they had proposed. It's impossible to have a perfect document, and so the statement of discretion should always be included in there. And I don't really see much about discretion included in here, not discretion to change the width exactly, but to use some common sense, as Commissioner Blau indicated about the house that was split with a lot line right between it and so on. And we've dealt with those things in the past, and we'll probably deal with them in the future. And if you were to wait to come up with a document that covered everything, you'd wait forever, and your document would be 10,000 pages. You'd just never do it, because somebody would find some wiggle room to get out of this. So we're not in deliberation yet, are we? We're just discussing the project.
That's right.
All right, fine. I'll have some other comments then. Thank you.
Well, I think, before I turn to our newest Commissioner for her thoughts, I would just suggest that what we're doing is giving you our reactions to the efforts that have been advanced so far. I absolutely think the changes that staff has presented today are all moving in this direction of trying to find reasonable compromise between the competing interests. But as Commissioner Blau emphasized at the last meeting, there are a lot of people out there who don't and won't realize how this applies to their property until they come in and apply for a permit to do something. So with that in mind, you know, again, I think we should at least consider some language that would allow for a case-by-case alteration of what otherwise is the purpose of the ordinance. Commissioner Hartman.
Chairman Cooney, I'm just asking for a clarification. Are you suggesting, then, that there should be blanket discretion across the board, or would this apply merely to projects such as Rice Ranch and the legacy project that are in process now?
Well, it's a good question. My own thought was that we're talking about projects that are already approved, have already gone through the discretionary process, and now, for some reason, need to come in for a modification. And I was suggesting, as an alternative to what Commissioner Blau suggested, that we define in the ordinance minor and have it approved in advance, that we instead have discretion vested in the decision-makers to look at those cases, to determine if there's some compromise, some lessening of the width of the buffer ordinance, or, for example, in the case of the project, I think it's Key Site 3 along the highway, is there a need for it? There's 100-foot highway stretch, that kind of thing. But no, I wasn't suggesting in every case, at least I wasn't, but that's certainly a possible position. Commissioner Blau.
Well, I think, I thought what I said was exactly what Commissioner Brown said, and so if I didn't say it exactly, she said it, I'm sorry, I meant to. And I agree with Commissioner Cooney. If we allow the commission the opportunity to waive the ordinance or waive the condition of the ordinance on discretionary projects based on our determination, our discretion, I would support that. Having said that, I'm not going to support the ordinance at all, I'm going to vote against it, but, and understand that I thoroughly agree there needs to be buffers between, for the agriculture. The difference is, I don't want to put in the formal ordinance, I want the Planning Commission to be able to decide if a buffer is required, and help them decide how big it should be. I realize we've got a minimum of 100 and maximum of 300, and based on some of the testimony I've seen in here, that's not necessarily a good idea. We got one letter this last week that talked about being adjacent to a winery, and they're suggesting that because of the noise, and because of the nighttime operations, and because of other issues, that it'll be 1,000 feet. I can see, in my own minded vision cases, where 300 feet's not big enough. I can also see plenty of cases where 100 feet's too large. So as a policy, I love the idea this becomes policy, and I think it's, one of our speakers, Ms. Wyman referred to it, you need this policy. Yes, I think it should be a policy. I think it should be written, I think every project comes before us, we should look at it and view it and use these guidelines in here to approve that project, but I'm not crazy about the fact it's an ordinance. I think we're going to have a lot of unintended consequences, and I think we're not going to be doing the best job in the future of planning and providing for projects, providing for the protection of agriculture. So I love the idea to give the future Planning Commission discretion so that they can not unfairly burden an approved project, so I do like that idea, but it's not enough to cause me to support the ordinance itself.
Okay, well, I think we're getting a little bit out over our skis here now. We are deliberating, but I do think it's important to have staff provide feedback on what they've heard from the public and also from the commission. Is this the time for us to vote and move it along to the board, or would you like to have some time to prepare some language in response to at least what a majority of us feel is a needed improvement? Mr. Hunt.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, staff is suggesting that you provide us some time to address this recent issue about discretionary permits or approvals coming back in, and that we need a little time to craft some language and bring that back to you. We would like to do that today, or perhaps we could do it just after a short break, but I would suggest you go through the rest of the ordinance, and so if there's other issues that we need some time on, then we can just lump those all together.
Okay, great. I'm mindful of the concern that has been expressed, that it needs to move along. There are projects being approved without the necessary buffers. There's a very strong support for the policy of buffers, and we're not going to be able to craft every single word, but I think we should hit the high points so that you have an opportunity to address them, and we'll see where we are at the end of the hearing as to whether we need another day or not. Okay, Commissioner Valencia.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, since it looks like we're not going to get into deliberation, but this borders on it, but I think people have expressed their position on this ordinance. I also don't support the ordinance as it stands now. I think it needs further study as possible use of land vacated and application, and I think that the buffer ordinance is the right approach, but in my estimation, more study is required, possibly the ideal use of the buffer. I remember that many of these farmers and ranchers are land-rich but money-poor, and it would be an impact on them. And as we were doing updates and revisions here and trying to re-engineer the problem here, we're going to end up, we're trying to come up with a racehorse, we're going to end up with a camel. I like the concepts that Urban Planning Concepts came up with about new information only, but what is new information, as indicated by Rice Ranch, which happens to be in my That project has turned around several times because of the economy, and now we're talking about Key Site 3. Key Site 3 was modified three or four times and completely renovated along Highway 101, and where there was hardly any buffer, it was almost right along 101. Today it has a big buffer, yet it was turned down by the Board of Supervisors, and so it's being reworked. I don't know in what condition it'll come back in, but it'll be a completely new project, and you just, at some point, there's going to be a need for these housing projects, and if you make the land that's available, not good prime land for agriculture, but the land that's available for development, if you put so many restrictions on it, that it makes it difficult, we're going to be back at buying a 1,300, 1,600, 1,700 square foot house for $600,000, $700,000. We don't want that. I recall some of the projects that were approved in the fourth district, 1,800 square foot homes selling for $600,000, $700,000. It's ridiculous. Who can afford that? And a family of four can barely fit in one of those things, so we've got to use a lot of common sense on this, and there isn't any big hurry to get this buffer ordinance. We've had a change on the Board of Supervisors, and there's going to be some new thinking in there, and I think it's important to let them get their ideas on this, since one of the new members coming on the Board of Supervisors is a rancher who's had problems with the county before and has a vision of how things should be. I think that we just need to step back a little bit and regroup, let the document progress as it's going to do with revisions and updates and all the comments that are being made here, but I don't think we're ready for a recommendation at this point to the Board of Supervisors.
Well, Commissioner Valencia, let me just react to that. I think the work of the commission should go on without regard to the makeup of the Board of Supervisors. If the board chooses to delay its own consideration of the ordinance until the membership changes, that's up to the board. But I think there is, this ordinance has been reviewed extensively throughout the agricultural components of our planning organizations, and I think it's time for us to move it along in terms of tweaks. That's really at the stage I think we are right now in what long-range planning staff is asking us to identify. My own review of the ordinance raised some questions, but in general, I think the efforts that have been made to clarify and amplify the uses within the buffer zone, for example, are laudatory, and the ordinance is now one I feel fine about moving along to the board. I would ask one question, and that is regard to the provisions for vegetative screening. As I read it, the, there's an alternative to keeping the buffer area in open space on the non-ag parcel if vegetation of a certain size and depth is installed. Is that your intent, Ms. Stark?
Commissioner Cooney, can you repeat that question again, please?
Yes, with respect to vegetative screening, I think I'm referring to subdivision 3 of Section F, which is over on page eight of our staff report. In 3, it said, it talks about the makeup of the vegetative screen, and there are several provisions there. You talk about minimum height of trees at maturity of 15 feet, I like the specific number, and the screen shall be at least 25 feet in depth. Could you just explain for the benefit of the public and the commission, the thought behind that vegetative screen as an alternative to leaving the property fallow?
Yes, the vegetative screen that we, now, we moved it, it wasn't a separate section, now we've moved it under the landscape lighting irrigation plan, and the vegetative screen is not required. It's an option that somebody could use to offset a potential increase. So if a, let's say, a proposed project had a, we have a minimum buffer width of 200, and after assessing the merits of the project and looked at the case-by-case or site-specific factors, we decided, you know, 200's not enough, it needs to be 300 feet, we might say, well, perhaps you could reduce that to 200 or 250 if you include a vegetative screen. So that's the reasoning for that. And the balancing act with it is that vegetation, when it's placed very close to leafy green vegetables, vegetables, can present a food safety issue. So we had, that's why we're not requiring a vegetative screen for each project. So that was kind of a tricky situation, but we wanted to address the concerns of the agricultural community about that. So we didn't put specifically where it needs to be and that it even has to be required. Does that answer your question?
I think so. You defined the screen has to be trees of a certain size and depth, and it doesn't say exactly where it's going to be placed. But the concept, I understand, is that you would offset a portion of the minimum buffer zone or even, not the minimum, but one that is considered by staff to be appropriate by planting one. Then it goes on to say, as was identified, that there's an agreement and a security acceptable to staff for the establishment of this agricultural buffer vegetative screen. But it's really just the establishment. There's nothing other than the agreement, I suppose, that would require the maintenance of that vegetative screen on into the future beyond return of the security. Is that the concept?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, in the earlier conversation we had with Commissioner Valencia, I should have added that as conditions of approval are placed on a project to require a buffer, we then have the ability to go in and enforce the buffer even after the bond or security has expired.
Okay.
And Commissioner Cooney, that would fall under the maintenance plan, so after that establishment period. And I also wanted to clarify, we don't say where the vegetative screen needs to be placed, but we do say the vegetative screen has to be consistent with the section in the ordinance that refers to allowable uses. And we have the restriction on, that's what we have in Section E1 on the staff report, page 10. We say low-lying, we have tall hedges, but low-lying landscaping vegetative screen that does not include tall, trees or tall hedges. So that vegetative screen would actually need to occur in the restricted uses within the buffer because we didn't want it too close to the agricultural lot if they had production agriculture.
Okay. All right. That moves me along. Commissioner Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, I think about Ms. Stark's initial briefing of the commission about that this project's taken six years, I think. I don't know if we're going on seven or not. And there's been considerable effort and work with the ag community to come, and also, may I add, the development community if I'm not mistaken. So they have participated in this, in drafting this document. So they have seen what these buffer widths are, what the requirements are, because none of these have changed, I don't believe, from the last time that we've seen them. It's all pretty much the same. You've rearranged and reorganized the material. So this is what they saw before this ever got to us, if I'm not mistaken. And, you know, based upon that newspaper article I read in the Santa Maria Times today that Ms. McGinnis referred to concerning the project DJ Farms in Guadalupe, I was quite taken by the number of representatives of the ag community who showed up at that hearing to plead for a better buffer. And what we have seen, what we see, and we've heard people come before this commission about those people living adjacent to ag and the effects, that I really think that to promote and support ag in this county, which is a place that has high value and places has a very importance in the county, that we really need something like this. And I think that, I know in speaking to agriculturalists, that there have already been accommodations in some of these issues that, and I spoke with Mr. Lackey this morning just to reconfirm that, that, you know, buffer widths are kind of at the minimum. If you look at other ordinances by other jurisdictions in the state, that they've got bigger buffers, wider buffers. So I think that what we've done here is a reasonable accommodation to development interests, to ag interests. And I think if we can sort of tweak this thing that allows the planning commission some flexibility to look at projects that have already been approved or to address instances where we have no idea what the effects might be of this, that we could give some allowance for reducing buffer depending upon what that issue might be, like the lot line adjustment through, as incident to the property line going through the house. So I'm totally supportive of it. In fact, I think that Ms. Stark's recent efforts to respond to the planning commission's comments were provided a better ordinance, a stronger ordinance, lots of good detail, lots of information. So I would like to see staff kind of move forward to see if we can't provide just a little more wiggle room for the commission, but maintain what we have here. When this goes to the Board, they can do whatever they want with it, but I think that this will have had our best effort and certainly staff's best effort over the last six years. And I think it is now time to move on. I don't think we should be waiting anymore.
Commissioners, we're looking for guidance to staff on additional issues that they might address in specific language to bring back to us. Commissioner Blau?
Yeah, I have a real question here. One of the issues that was raised, and I think I raised it last time, you had it on your list and you elected not to address it, was what happens when a parcel that is now subject to our ag ordinance is annexed by a city, whether it be Guadalupe or Santa Maria, does all those issues disappear? Because once we annex a piece of property to the city, they have their own zoning and they have their own ordinances, and they're not subject to ours anymore. So address what happens, or tell me what happens when, you know, it's annexed by another public agency.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Blau, the issue that might come into play with LAFCO is the annexing city would have to pre-zone the land that it's proposing to annex. The LAFCO at that point would not be able to tell that annexing city what zoning to assign or to consider for pre-zoning. But whatever that city does choose to, or however that city chooses to pre-zone that property, if they choose to keep that similar to what's already required by the county ordinance, zoning ordinance, that would be in effect for two years. And this annexing city would be unable to change that pre-zoning for two years.
But they could pre-zone it without the ag buffer if they so desired. And if LAFCO approved it, then it basically goes away. I guess the, you know, and I'll just tell you, my concern is, is that, you know, as one who develops in the city of Santa Maria a lot, eh, that's okay. We'll just make sure we don't do anything that's in the county. We'll annex the city before we develop it. But that's kind of what's probably going to happen if we're not careful about how we address that issue. But at the interest of the question that the public raised, what happens if it's annexed? It's up to the city that it does the annexation, period. So, okay.
Commissioner Hartman?
I had a question for Ms. Stark or perhaps Ms. Petrovich, and that is, is the issue that Ms. Petrovich and Mr. Peterson raised, has that been adequately addressed regarding grazing animals and the exception for pre-existing homes on properties?
Commissioner Hartman, yes. I feel like the proposal that Ms. Petrovich suggested as far as changing the word grazing animals to livestock, I think that's a very effective way to handle that. The phrase about the reasonable typical level, I think it was inaccurate what Susan Petrovich had said. Actually, that term that she suggested has been in the ordinance in Section 2, or sorry, in the guidelines in Section 2 the whole time. It has never been in the ordinance. And we were considering putting in there, but it had a narrative flavor to it, so we decided to just keep it in the guidelines, not put it in the ordinance.
Yeah. I think reasonable, typical, our terms of art, typical is less well-defined in the law than reasonable, so, you know, I had a problem with that. But you seem to have jumped ahead on it, so. Anything else, Commissioner Blau, for?
Yeah, I had one more. I remember reading here, it talked about existing houses would be exempt, obviously. However, there was some language in there that talked about if you were to remodel or to add on to it. And I think, I believe it said, I couldn't add on to the side of the house that maybe is adjacent to the agriculture user. I have a little problem with that. It seems to me that, you know, I'd be much happier if it said, you know, adding 50% of the footage to an existing house or some other language. But again, here we go. They're in for a building permit to add on to a family room to their house, and all of a sudden, there's a discretionary permit required or they're coaching into what might be an ag buffer. I just see that as being a nightmare for you all as staff, when someone comes in and makes that application. So maybe we could visit that, see how the rest of the commissioners feel about existing housing and doing remodels or doing, you know, doing additions to it.
Commissioner Cooney, Commissioner Blau, I just want to clarify, so is your issue, the fact, the term, you know, direct the commission to page 3 at the bottom, 2.1, Section E, Point 1K, the very last clause there. And I can actually pull it up here on the screen. It might be a little clearer. I just wanted to understand Commissioner Blau's comment here. I guess we don't have it. I could pull it up in the staff report.
It's where it talked about remodeling or doing additions.
Mr. Chair, are we approaching a break soon?
Yes. We may not be approaching very quickly, but we are approaching.
Sorry. Okay. This is page 3 of the staff report.
Item K at the bottom.
Item K at the bottom, that refers to modifications or additions to structures legally existing as of, you know, the date of this ordinance, provided that any addition to a structure that is located within a buffer required by this section shall not extend further towards the immediately adjacent agricultural lot. And I guess my question for you, Commissioner Blau, is is your concern with this whole thing, or is it the latter part which says extending further into the, towards the immediately adjacent agricultural lot?
Here's my example. I've got a lot that is one acre. And it's, we'll say it's not square, so it's 100 feet in width and it's 400 feet in depth, excuse me, 400 feet in width and 100 feet in depth. And I got my house in the middle. I want to add 10 feet to the back of the house. I can't do it here. Because the buffer would be, the entire lot would be subject to the buffer. In fact, in that case, I can't build anything on the house anywhere because I'm in the entire buffer area. So I just, I mean, if K wasn't there at all, I'd be okay. If they add on to the existing property, you know, I don't care which side of the house they add on to. I don't see where it's going to further adversely affect the agriculture operation. But I could see, I could see places where you've made it impossible for a person to do an addition to a single-family residence.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Blau, if I could add, in most instances, an addition to an existing single-family home is not a discretionary project. In the coastal zone, it could be.
It doesn't matter. It says that the exemptions, well, but it could be if there's, I mean, but it could be. Exactly. I just have a problem with K. If you take it out entirely, it'd make me a lot happier.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, the language is modeled after other language in our code that if you have a house that is non-conforming, that is within a setback from ES or some other sensitive resource, then we allow you to expand that house, just not towards the sensitive resource. So that's the logic behind it. If the commission is uncomfortable with the restriction on the modification direction, we can certainly remove that. It's up to the commission.
Right. I agree. That's a question on which we will disagree. But the existing ordinance, and I've had some recent experience with it, does not preclude addition to an existing single-family residence even within the setback, as long as it's not toward the protected area. So a house I'm familiar with on the edge of a creek was entirely within the setback. It was added, the setback was added afterward. So the homeowner was limited to adding on to his structure in three directions, not closer to the creek. So I see that would be the effort here. And, you know, I think the purpose is, if we're going to have these setbacks, to preserve them. And it might prevent someone from adding on exactly the way they want, but, and there's no doubt that this is an infringement on the free use of one's property. And maybe we disagree as to the basic premise as to whether we need it, but that's a decision we'll come to. So in terms of language, at least, I don't think there's sufficient support to change that concept for now. Commissioner Hartman?
I just wanted to clarify that in such a case, they could put a parking garage or a carport or something. That's a restricted use that might be allowed in the buffer if someone were to alter their home, modify their home. I think restricted uses, maybe I misunderstand, but they're storage-type structures and parking.
Chairman Cooney, Commissioner Hartman, you would have to look at if this was an existing structure and after the fact, for some other discretionary purposes, a buffer was applied to that property, and we were looking at, well, what happens with a remodel? The same, you would look at the same allowed either restricted uses or unrestricted uses in the buffer that would guide whether or not you could do that. So if, depending upon the location, if a carport was restricted in that area, then you wouldn't be able to do it because it would still be subject to those provisions of the buffer. We were looking at the provision for the single-family residence as a principal use that would be allowed to be remodeled, but use the guidance, as Mr. Hunt had mentioned, that the county has used in other situations that you can expand but not closer to the protected resource. Whereas a carport or something would be viewed more as, you'd look at whether it be restricted and also it's considered an accessory or secondary use versus the principal use that we were trying to at least protect or provide direction for, to allow the expansion of the residential. But you would still look at the restrictions for the buffer if it precluded in that location, the carport. Because that was an issue in some situations that it still had, while it wasn't a habitable structure, but you still had some human presence that depending upon its location, it's restricted within the buffer. So I'm not sure if that answered your question in a roundabout way.
It might be allowed? It's absolutely not allowed.
Commissioner Hartman, I'll turn your attention to Exhibit 1, Attachment B, page 5, which contains the proposed language in the ordinance. And we haven't changed this, but that's where the section about allowable uses comes in, restricted uses. And we do have a restricted use for 2D at the bottom, parking areas, including carports and garages. So what David was saying is that we're trying to allow for modification to the structure, but we would not allow if someone's proposing a carport because it's a restricted use within the buffer, a new carport.
After discretionary project, yeah. So we have different layers of regulation here. But I think that's enough to give you the opportunity to draft something if you haven't already. And we could pick up with the balance of the hearing and the commission's decision following our next agenda items at your preference. following our next agenda items at your preference.
Mr. Chair, we feel prepared to come back after, if you're going to take a break, a 10- or 15-minute break, we're prepared to come back with language to address the concern that Mr. Blough raised in addition to other issues that have been raised. And we would like to wrap it up this morning.
Okay. So, we'll be back at 10:00 after 11:00 to finish this item. We've been considering the agricultural buffer ordinance, Item 2, on today's agenda. And staff was looking at some new language to address some concerns of commissioners. Mr. Hunt.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, staff would like to come back at the end of your hearing today to finish this up, to give us more time. The items that we would address at that time would be the issue of the tall trees or hedges, the addition of the word "natural" to waterways, the issue-
Can you just give us by section so we can go through, if you wouldn't mind? Thank you.
The-
E1C. For the tall trees is E1C.
Mr. Chairman, we need a minute or two.
You know, I think since you're just itemizing these and not giving us the actual language at this point, if you just go through them, we'll be able to catch up. And then, when you're, when you're giving us the language, we'll go section by section. But we just want to be sure we've got all the proposed changes on a list.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, the first one would be the tall trees and hedges, the height of those. And that's on, that addresses Section E1C on Page 10. The second would be addition of the word "natural" before "waterways," also on Page 10, E1EE. The third one would be discretionary allowances for approved projects, already approved projects. And that would be on Item C., the exceptions, on Page 3 of the staff report. And the fourth one would be to address horses as part of the definition of rangeland or pastureland, and that would be in the definition section. In addition, we want to just remind you that we had revisions in the staff report and also revisions in the staff PowerPoint.
Commissioner Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wonder if the commission would consider addition, some language also. And it's on Section F. 2C, where we describe the kinds of plants that are going to be, that are allowed. It says, "Plants are drought-tolerant or low water use." And I'd like to add the language "and fire resistant." This is, I'm looking at Attachment 1 of, Exhibit 1 of Attachment B. on Page 7, 2C. If that's something the commission can accept and if that's something that's acceptable to staff as well. Okay, thank you.
No problem. Okay. So, what we'll do is simply table this discussion to the end of our agenda today. Optimistically, it might not be very long from now, so keep an eye on us and we'll be back ready to go. Okay, that'll bring us to Items 3 and 4 on today's agenda, having to do with the cell tower application. 4, both pertaining to Crown Castle antenna system upgrades. If you could read both items into the record, Mr. Villalobos, to get us started.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Item number 3, the following is, the hearing on request of Sharon James, agent for the applicant Crown Castle, to consider Case Number 12CUP11, application filed on April 24, 2012, and to accept the exemption to CEQA described in the notice of exemption prepared and adopted by the Public Utilities Commission. The lead agency is adequate for this project pursuant to Sections 15061B, 3, 15301B, 15302C, 15303, 15304 of the state guidelines for implementation of the California Environmental Quality Act. And Item Number 4, the following is, the hearing on the request of Sharon James, agent for the applicant Crown Castle, to consider 12CUP12 and 12CDP29, applications filed on April 24, 2012, and to accept the exemption pursuant to CEQA described in the notice of exemption prepared and adopted by the Public Utilities Commission. The lead agency is adequate for this project pursuant to Sections 15061B, 3, 15301B, 15302C, 15303, and 15303 of the CEQA guidelines.
Okay, thank you. We have both items before us. Although they are differently numbered and have different recommendations, some of the presentation will overlap, so we can go as you wish, Ms. Lowry.
Thank you, Commissioners and members of the public. My name is Megan Lowry. I'm the project planner to the projects, for the projects before you for the Crown Castle Distributed Antenna System Upgrade Project. The two case numbers represent the sites in the inland area, 12CUP11, and those in the coastal areas, 12CUP12. Staff will begin with an overall general presentation that incorporates both cases, and then we will conclude with recommendation for the inland sites. Your board, our commission at that time can make an action if you choose or discuss or ask specific questions pertaining to sites. And then we can present our final slide on the recommendations for the coastal section, and you can make an action on that at that time.
Excuse me just for a second. I should have mentioned that the numbering is different than what you just stated. The second item is 12ORD 13, not 12. I'm not sure why. Shows differently on the, on the notice and your statement. So, just so we get the record straight, which is it? Ms. Ami?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, we're prepared to go in either order at your discretion since the coastal or application is first. We can start with that and give the same presentation, but, and with the recommendations for the coastal project, and then move on to the inland project.
That's fine. No, I was just talking about the, the project number is different from what Ms. Lowry cited and is in her slide presentation, at least in our agenda. The coastal portion is ordinance 13. And inland is 11, I believe.
Actually, the inland is, the coastal is 12CUP12. And it's listed as second on the agenda, so we will move forward with the inland recommendation first.
Okay, great. But so, it's erroneous in our agenda, then?
Yes.
Okay. Good. Sorry to interrupt. I thought it would be easier.
Mr. Chair, if I, if I may, I believe you're looking at the agricultural ordinance case numbers as Item 2.
Oh, yeah, you're right. You're right. You're right.
And sorry about giving you false approval.
Okay.
All right, so we-
So, Chair and Commissioners, so, just so the record is clear, I'll note that the item is properly noticed on the agenda. Item 3 is the ending 00011, and Item 4 are the 2 ending 00012 and 00029.
Let me, while I've interrupted once, just ask if there are any ex parte communications or site visits from Commissioners. Commissioner Hartman?
Yes. It was like a scavenger hunt, but I saw every inland and coastal telephone pole. I think it's a bit of an initiation right for a new commissioner.
Commissioner Brown?
Well, I can't top that, but I think that's quite admirable. You know, it's kind of daunting. A lot of these are in the Second District and in Hope Ranch. And if you've ever been there without maps, even with maps, you get lost. So, I did a Google search and it was really pretty interesting because you can see these telephone poles on Google and you can see what the infrastructure is. So, that was, so I did my site visit via the Internet. But I didn't get to see them all, but I got to see a lot, enough, so that I could get an understanding of what's being proposed. Thank you.
Thank you both. Okay, now, Ms. Lowry.
Thank you. So, we'll first begin by way of background as far as telecommunications facilities in the county's jurisdiction. Just want to simply state that the county's jurisdiction are, is limited. Federal law preempts and limits local zoning regulation of telecommunications facilities, primarily speaking of the Federal Telecommunications Act of 1996 and the federal shot clock ruling of November 18, 2009, both of which regulations are included in the staff report and discussed on how they pertain to the proposed projects. The primary limitation is, of course, that local jurisdictions shall not prohibit or have the effect of prohibiting telecommunications service. So, the county's ordinances do reflect this, that we have a limited authority and we aren't prohibiting or having the effect thereof. The proposed project locations, as we discussed, are both in inland and the coastal areas. The distinction really is only by way of zoning ordinance, so all the projects are similar or the same. Some fall under Article 2 Coastal Zoning Ordinance and others in the inland area. There are 12 sites in the inland area and four in the coastal zone area. They span everywhere from Isla Vista to the central residential area of the Gleta Community, several in Hope Ranch, and then finally in Summerland. As I stated, there are 12 sites in the inland area. They're specified here and four in the coastal area. And although staff's presentation won't go into detail on the individual sites, we are prepared with plans and photo simulations for each of these should you have specific questions. And the applicants are here to discuss any specific technological questions you might The proposed project is an upgrade to the existing distributed antenna system network that NextG, now owned by Crown Castle, constructed in 2010. NextG, or now Crown Castle, is a shared wireless infrastructure provider. They build and then lease infrastructure to wireless carriers such as T-Mobile, AT&amp;T, Verizon, and the like. They initially installed their infrastructure for services for MetroPCS, a new carrier to Santa Barbara County, back in 2010. The proposed upgrade would add capabilities for the network to accommodate T-Mobile's services in the community. The sites are located on existing utility poles in residential areas. The primary coverage concern or service is for the residential areas themselves in which they are located. Proposal would add one new omnidirectional antenna and one new radio box that would be covered with a shroud covering both the existing radio and the proposed radio. On the right is the photo simulation of one of these example sites showing what would result in two antennas total and two boxes that would be covered by one shroud. The benefit of going on this existing distributed network is that there is existing fiber optic cabling connecting these sites. And the proposed additions don't require any new cabling or connections because it already exists. The fiber optic cabling has a capacity to carry service for up to five carriers technology. Additionally, the proposed antenna also has a capability of carrying another carrier's service on it, depending on the carrier. So, it's slightly larger than the existing antenna. T-Mobile has a different type of technology. But this particular type of device does have some capacity to carry another carrier's service in the future, should it be required. There are two primary issues for the proposed project, the first being aesthetics. The proposed project would provide cellular service to residential areas that are fairly tightly developed, and they'd be located on utility poles and the road ridesways. So, they'd be visible to not only the residents, but then any road users, including traffic and pedestrians. However, the proposed facilities would be co-locating on the existing utility poles rather than putting antennas on new antenna support structures or new poles as telecommunications facilities traditionally do. They are also co-locating with existing telecom facilities themselves, having two antennas on the same pole rather than distributing the antennas of the sites throughout the community. So, it kind of reduces the number of locations. And lastly, they're using minimal-sized equipment. Proposed equipment is much smaller than traditional, what we call macro sites, that generally have large panel antennas, antennas, large meaning anywhere between four and eight feet tall per individual antenna. These antennas are about two feet tall. Health and safety is the second issue area that we address in the staff report, and that is primarily because these facilities are providing a cellular service that transmit and receive radio frequency signals to provide service for their cellular customers. That by nature, the radio frequency emissions is a health concern that is assessed. Radio frequency emissions are regulated by the Federal Communications Commission in federal law. Federal law actually requires the facility emissions to comply with the federal health and safety standards at all times. There are set standards in which the county ensures these facilities comply. As a part of the permit application, the county requires the applicant submit a report that assesses the existing emissions and proposed emissions and ensure that they are in compliance with the federal safety standards. The radio frequency emissions report that was submitted concluded that the proposed facilities, in conjunction with any of the existing facilities, would result in less than 2% of the FCC limits. Therefore, the facilities would be well within the FCC health and safety guidelines, or requirements. Additionally, the permit conditions require measurement and monitoring of the facilities upon installation and then every five years thereafter. Therefore, county believes, county staff believes that the proposed project wouldn't have any significant impacts and is consistent with the zoning ordinance requirements. Before we conclude, I'd like to add a couple corrections to the staff report. The first being that you were handed out a memo this morning with a attachment, a replacement Attachment C., which is the notice of exemption. It is for both the county site, county inland, as well as the county coastal. A new notice of exemption is provided as an attachment to that memorandum. Consistent with that, staff would like to modify the CEQA findings, finding 1.1.1 in both the coastal and inland areas, findings, to read as follows, that the proposed project is exempt from environmental view pursuant to Sections 15301B, 15303D, and 15304F of the guidelines of implementation of the California Environmental Quality Act. And this is, a notice of exemption is attached to the memorandum you provided today. And this is, a notice of exemption is attached to the memorandum you provided today. Lastly, would recommend adding one standard condition for road encroachment permit, requiring that that owner or applicant shall obtain a road encroachment permit from the Roads Division prior to issuance of the zoning clearance or land use permit to ensure that traffic control requirements are followed. That concludes staff's presentation. If there are specific questions, please feel free to ask. We have both plans and photo simulations for individual sites. With that, we request, or we recommend that you make the required findings for approval of the project specified in Attachment A of the staff report, including the CEQA findings as presented in the memo dated November 14th, 2012. That your commission determine the project is exempt from CEQA pursuant to sections 15301B, 15303D, and 15304F of the CEQA guidelines, including as Attachment C provided in the memo dated November 14th, 2012. And finally, approve the project 12CUP 11, subject to the conditions as revised, the new traffic condition included as Attachment B.
Okay, Ms. Lowry, efficient as always. Questions? Commissioner Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and always appreciate Ms. Lowry's very thorough handling of these projects. A question about aesthetics. There's a cell site in my neighborhood, and every time I walk by it, I'm reminded that there are certain limitations. But it was nice to see the comments by the S-Bar concerning camouflaging of the equipment. And so my question has to do with the camouflaging that will occur. And I just, and I did email Ms. Lowry the questions, and she answered me it last night, very late hour. But the question, and I, just for the public, in case there's any public interested, because I think it is important, these utility poles are pretty ugly in their own right. And in some places, they're adorned with lots of boxes and, I don't know, all kinds of stuff. So I think the attempt to sort of minimize the intrusive appearance of the additional equipment is appropriate. But the issue is that some of the, the equipment that's going to be placed by the applicant will be painted so that it'll all be similar. In other words, the antennas, if there's one, or let's talk about the boxes. So the boxes will all be painted this great color brown that you used. Now, there is some equipment on those poles that isn't owned by the applicant, like the conduit leading up to the boxes, which is owned by Southern California Ed. It's all these wonderful silver colors, and we, those aren't painted. Those are just, if you bring up that slide that you showed of on that Zinc Avenue project, you can see pretty readily that it's, while the box itself disappears, it's this great, yeah, it's that. And there's other ones, I noticed on the, in Cuervo, there's a whole bunch of conduits leading up the side of the pole. There's no way that we, that can be painted, because it belongs to Southern California Ed, and they're not, they're not a part of the project. Is that correct?
Commissioner Brown, that is correct, that it can't be a requirement of this permit.
Okay. Now, if there are, once these antennas and additional boxes are installed, if there is additional equipment that's added to the box, like for instance on North Fairview, there was a project that we saw, and the equipment boxes are painted this wonderful brown, and finally got the plants installed. But T-Mobile put a box on the equipment that is now silver. So my question does, what happens, because you indicated additional carriers can attach themselves to this project. Can, how do we make sure that we don't have a conglomeration of colors on this pole with additional carriers once this project moves on? Are they not subject to any conditions by being placed on these boxes or on these, on this applicant's project? How does that work?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Brown, any equipment that Crown Castle would install would have to be consistent with the project conditions which require the painting. So any of their equipment, and they have proposed to paint both the existing antenna, existing boxes, anything of theirs. Should another carrier come onto the network, it would require additional permits that would also have a similar condition. We recommend to staff that either we stay consistent with the color that we've already chosen, or that we request repainting of all of it.
Yeah.
But those would be subject to conditions. In the event, in the event that they add equipment that is unknown to us, and we come across it, such as the Fairview site, they are still subject to those conditions. Usually, the installation workers are not aware of the painting requirement, but we can go back through permit compliance, which is applied to these projects.
No, I think the color is very appropriate. I just want to make sure that as additional equipment is added, we're not adding boxes of different colors, and it's all sort of matches. So that would be my only thought. And I've been assured that there are conditions in here that there's requirement to do that. So that's, thank you.
Ms. Lowry, with regard to the overall network of these various carriers throughout these areas, you know, we have through the years approved different locations. We've paid a lot of attention to the specifics of the location, and we've asked applicants to come forward and prove that they need to have the installation to fill in gaps. Now we have newer technology, thankfully. It's less obtrusive, hopefully even less threatening to the health and safety of the surrounding community. What happens to the old cell towers, the traditional higher intensity cell towers that exist in these same neighborhoods? Are, is, does this proposal suggest, as part of its benefit, the elimination of any existing towers, or are these simply complementary to what is already in place?
Sure, Chair, Commissioners, it really depends on the carrier's needs. Typically, these types of installations are infill, so they're in addition to the larger sites that already exist within the community, and these are reaching pockets or areas that either are lacking of coverage and it's difficult to see into, or it's an additional coverage providing capacity. So for instance, the Montecito sites that are not before you, there are, there are larger communication sites up on Gibraltar Peak, but they are mass broadcast and don't provide the coverage they need at the ground level. So those are, even though there is a general coverage, there isn't enough capacity to actually hold the calls, and there is still a need for capacity. In addition, depending on the carrier, the type of technology they have, they'll have a call technology, but then they'll also have data services that require a different frequency. And so it depends on how many frequencies that particular carrier is using, and how much coverage and capacity they need for their customer base. However, that being said, we have had the first of our decommissioning sites, and as you may know, the QAD site is being decommissioned. There are also one or two others in the county, north county sites, that have been decommissioned. We're seeing that because largely, I suppose, we've seen the bought-out of Sprint Nextel merging. So as carriers merge, and they, and they don't need competing sites, but they want to up, they might either use both sites in different ways, or they would like to not pay rent on a site that they don't use. So we are seeing a very small amount of decommissioning, and there are conditions of approval that are standard to all telecom facilities that require that if the site is no longer needed, that they decommission it and restore the site as needed. There are also conditions that require that as technology improves, if there needs to be a reassessment of the technology that's there, so smaller or less invasive, that we revisit that.
Well, that's reassuring, because our coverage charts that you provided to us and are very helpful show the areas where there's currently bad coverage, and then what the effect of the new installations would be on those areas to show better coverage. But they don't necessarily indicate where there's overlap with existing coverage. In other words, if it starts out green, it stays green. And, and what I'd be interested in is more or less aggressive position taken by staff that if, if there is less need or no need for an existing installation, that we suggest that to the carrier as a part and parcel of a new approval.
Chair, Commissioner, I just wanted to address that, and I agree that that has been, one of the things we've worked on with carriers is a demonstration of need, and it's been added as one of the findings for approval. I do want to draw your attention to the attachment with the coverage maps. Should have made it in, oh, maybe it did not, oh, there is. There's a service, service objective narrative that we requested the applicant describe the service objective, so be it coverage or capacity for certain areas. And these are just, these are general statements pertaining to the proposed service areas, but to write a little bit of clarification to the coverage maps that they included. And as you can see, there are some areas, Gleta and Hope Ranch, where there's just a significant lack of coverage. There's not the coverage there. But as I stated, the Montecito sites, there's some lack of coverage, but then also that there's just not enough uplink, which is the ability for the phone to reach back to the cell site and provide that coverage. So this was one attempt to try and communicate those needs. I think we'd like to continue to have that explanation as part of the applications.
I agree. I think a concern we all share is that as new installations are added, if we're not removing existing installations, we're just adding two, what's the cumulative impact of this on a community? Yes, eventually, you can get complete coverage, but at some increased risk of the activities. And, you know, I know you're very diligent about that, but, but I'd like to see us move in a, in a direction that minimizes the amount of exposure compared to the benefit. And so, at the very least, we should expect that kind of presentation to us. Commissioner Valencia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In the past, the antennas showed us an alignment of axes because they had three elements of 120 degrees each. This is omnidirectional, so this is dependent on range whether, where you put the other antennas. Is that correct?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Valencia, that is correct. These are omnidirectional.
Okay. And so what'll happen to the, those others that were three elements of 120? Are they going to be slowly replaced by these omnidirectional antennas?
Commissioner Valencia and Chairman, that's what we were speaking to, is that it depends on the carrier's need for coverage. Most likely, these, they won't be ultimately replaced by this. It'll kind of work together. There'll be the larger sites that already exist, and then these will be infill.
What works will stay there, but when it doesn't work, there'll be a replacement with an upgrade of a probably omnidirectional antenna? If it's, well, it's a different carrier, I understand, yeah?
Oh, the, the means of having omnidirectional versus panel, the directional antennas, both technologies are still current and very capable of providing service. It's really just the type of location and what it is they're using. But those are still used almost predominantly, the directional antennas.
And is there an alignment of that, of that omnidirectional, or it doesn't matter which way they put it in aligned?
It doesn't, it has a, a certain propagation design or pattern, so it's not a complete circle. But for the most part, it, it's just a 360 coverage area.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Hartman?
I just had a minor comment about notice. Every one of the posts was, had a sign, and so it was easy to find, except one where it had fallen down. I did notice, though, the writing smudges off over time, so people know who to call, but not necessarily exactly what's proposed. Just wanted to add that.
Okay, if we have no more questions, we should turn to the applicant. Ms. James?
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. I'm happy to be here today. I appreciate the fact that Megan made a great effort to get us on the November agenda. We're anxious to move forward with our projects here in the community. And I would like to say also, it was a privilege to meet your new Commissioner and, and, you know, get to personally shake her hand this morning. I don't often get to be in a meeting where that is going on. And as Megan said, you know, we do have an existing network. We're making every effort to use the network that's here at this point. The Santa Barbara market generally is very interesting, interesting to most of the major carriers. And so when we built this network a couple of years ago for MetroPCS, which most people didn't even know in this community, because it was a new wireless company, it was a struggle, partly because it was an unknown. But we did build the network. We did say then that that fiber would carry multiple users. And so now we're coming back to you, and we're doing just what we said we would do. We're bringing, bringing in other carriers who come to us and want to be on that highway, basically, and want to have improved coverage in the Santa Barbara market. The Montecito area is very interesting to most of the major carriers. It's also probably the most difficult area for us to be successful in. But I appreciate your time. I think Megan's done a fabulous job of presenting this. We're doing everything we can to keep the visual impact as low as possible. That new antenna that we're adding, while it's seven inches wide, opposed to the existing antenna, which is two and a half inches, when you see it in a mock-up, or when you actually see it installed, you won't, I don't believe you'll feel that there's a huge visual impact. We did mock-up two of them in Montecito, and the M-Bar agreed that, you know, that was not a great visual impact. We're trying to vault where we can so that there's not as much visual impact. We heard that message, you know, loud and clear on our previous project, and we're doing everything we can to keep a visual impact to a minimum. And I'm available if you have any questions.
Any questions for Ms. James? I don't think so right now.
Great, thank you.
Okay, do we have speaker slips? Commissioner Blough? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the commission on this that hasn't submitted a speaker slip? Okay, so we'll come back to staff then for any final comments. Ms. Lowry, I understand your recommendation. Is there anything else that we need to address?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. No, I am available for questions if there are any.
We, we take particular notice of, in the staff report, your comment on page nine that the applicant must show, number one, they're prevented from filling a significant gap in their own service coverage, and two, their proposed way to fill in that significant gap is the least intrusive means. So in the event this is reviewed, either by the Board of Supervisors or beyond, we, we need to be satisfied that those conditions are met here. And it seems to me from your staff report that, that you have demonstrated that. It's, it's more stepping back from this project, looking at our overall cell installations, if, if we can continue to press to minimize at the same time as we reap the benefit of better coverage. And I, I trust as long as you are where you are, we're doing that. So do we have a motion from one of the Commissioners? Commissioner Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will move staff's recommendation.
Is there a second?
I second.
Commissioner Hartman, thank you.
And Mr. Chair and Commissioners, and just for clarity, I understand the motion to be that you would be moving staff's recommendation as to both projects, the project ending in 11, and the project ending in 12 and 29, both projects.
I'll agree to that. Thank you. That will be my motion.
Commissioner Hartman, do you agree?
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion among the commission? Not seeing any. David, would you call a roll, please? Commissioner Blough?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Hartman?
Aye.
Commissioner Valencia?
Aye.
And Commissioner Cooney?
Aye.
Motion's passed five to zero. All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Lowry and staff, and also Ms. James. Just a couple of minutes we'll take here. It's a little before 12, but assuming long-range staff is ready, we will return to item number two. two. Planning Commission meeting of the 14th of November, 2012. The item we are returning to is item two on our agenda, the agricultural buffer ordinance. Staff has returned with some suggested changes to ordinance language. Mr. Hunt?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, staff was struggling with the exact language. We're not prepared at this time to present language to you. We could either come back after lunch or continue to additional meeting. Some of the issues that we're wrestling with is do, does the commission interested in an exemption that applies to the entire ordinance or just gives discretion, but the ordinance is still applied? Does the exemption apply to the buffer width or uses in addition to the buffer width? So depending on that kind of answer, we would place the language in different parts of the ordinance, depending on what the direction is.
I appreciate your thinking through the actual implementation of what our ideas were, and, you know, I'd be happy to have the commission give you further input so that your, your effort is focused, but I'm not so sure that, that doing it over lunch is, is going to be successful. We have, our next meeting is just about a month away, but, but my feeling is you could come back with a clean staff report that addresses all the issues at one time. We could, we could take it up, allow the public to comment on the new sections, and do that in a fairly efficient hearing, even though we have a very long day, I think we could do that. How do the rest of the commissioners feel? Would you rather wait around today or, or have it continue? Commissioner Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think staff just might appreciate the additional time delayed. Is that something in December? We'd look at at our first meeting in December, which would be the 12?
Yes, yes, be as soon as possible.
Yeah.
Commissioner Blau?
Yeah, I would agree. I think contingency is the right thing to do. I, I'm prepared to respond to the other question that the staff prepared whenever we're ready to take those responses.
Why don't we address the issue of the proposed discretion to the commission?
Yeah, at least for me, even though I told you I'm not going to support this. The more exemptions, the more latitude that you give the commission for a future project, the happier I'll be. That's why I was saying before, if you made this a policy, then it's real simple. We can apply the policy as we, as we deem it appropriate. When you make it the ordinance, it's, it gives the commission less discretion, which I don't like. So the more discretion you can give to any and every part of the ordinance would make me happy. But I'm sure that the, I should say, the more discretion we have in the future, the happier I'm going to be. I'm not going to be happy unless I have 100% discretion, but that's okay. I can live with that.
Commissioner Brown?
Well, I disagree slightly with my colleague over here to my right, but I think it's important, if we have an ag buffer ordinance, that we respect what has occurred and what has been written. So I don't think the commission should have unlimited discretion, and I guess this is the argument that we need, that's what you're looking for, is just where you go. But I think the commission does need to have some wiggle room, such that we can't foresee every future project or how this may apply to every, so I don't think it should be the ultimate discretion that says no buffer. So I think that staff, and I would appreciate the commission going that there is limited discretion to apply to both of the questions that Mr., or to both of the responses that Mr. Hunt posed.
In other words, you would include in the discretion, the limited discretion, the uses within the buffer, that they could be adjusted by a future commission in a given case as well?
Right.
Okay. So, let me add my comments to those. I, I agree more with you, Commissioner Brown. I think the discretion should not be across the board so that an applicant with, with a project starting at ground zero could come in and say, you know, I just feel like I can build more houses if I have less, less of a buffer. And, and it gives a, it really is a weakening, I think, of the impact of the buffer ordinance in the first place. So I would like to, at least as far as this commission's input is concerned, I would like to limit the commission's discretion to those projects which speakers and commissioners have pointed out are at a severe disadvantage since they've been approved and they're coming in for modifications to the project that would be impacted by the buffer ordinance being created in between the original project approval and the subsequent modification. So I'm looking at a fairly limited loophole for the benefit of those projects already approved. Now, there may be another category of projects where it makes as much sense, but, but as far as I heard in testimony today, it really applies to discretionary projects where, which are already on the books, not built, and they're looking to modify them. Commissioner Hartman?
Well, I would just like to echo what Chair Cooney said. I think that the discretion, if it's too wide, then it, issues of fairness arise. I think that it's for projects in the pipeline, as far as I can envision it, and more for the width rather than uses, because I think that requires, would, would just be more difficult in the context of the ordinance as a whole.
Mr. Munoz?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, it might be helpful to staff if you, if the commission can provide some examples of the types of products that may trigger when this type of exemption may apply.
Well, I, for myself, I was thinking of those projects which, which have been expressed here today, such as the Key Site Three, which is adjacent to Highway 101. You know, we've seen that project in various stages, and it may be finally approved by the board. I'm not sure what the status is or whether they're coming back with a different project, but that would be an example of one where we paid attention to the setbacks from the highway, for example. We weren't necessarily paying attention to the setbacks from agricultural uses on the far side of the highway. So I, I think it would be helpful if staff had to do a precise analysis of what should be the setback, in that case, the, the buffer width, that the commission have an opportunity to weigh in as to the effect of the highway and the, and the potential damage to agriculture. It'd be, I guess it's a matter of degree. That is, as Commissioner Blau says, that if the commission had 100% discretion to vary what staff proposes and based on the testimony of the applicant in the neighborhood, you know, we would have a buffer ordinance in name only. It really wouldn't apply to any project as long as the applicant, for a development, for example, felt that they could get around it if they could convince a majority of the commission and Board of Supervisors to make the change. So I think if we're going to make a statement that we support the, the notion of separation from agriculture and other uses, we need to make a stronger statement. I wouldn't even agree to an exception but for the fact that I really see these approved projects in a different light. This is not a new project where someone has an open space and they want to develop it with housing or, or other residential uses. That's really the project we're trying to protect against incursion by agriculture and, on the other hand, protect the agricultural use against development pressure. So it's fairly narrow as far as I'm concerned, but, you know, I don't know if that's enough guidance for you to this point, Mr. Hunt. If you want to craft something for our next hearing, we'll certainly give it a thorough Commissioner Blau?
Well, I was just going to suggest also that the legacy estates track and there's Rice Ranch Road. And for me, I guess if it had language in there where the modifications to an existing approved project didn't intensify the development, that that might be the real trigger. If it intensified the development, I would even feel different about it. I've said before this, don't get me wrong, I'm not, I'm not talking about that I don't like this because it, it creates these 100-foot buffers. I'm saying that that's, or a maximum of 300. I'm saying that may not be the right buffer. It could be less than 100, it could be more than 300. I don't know until I see the project. So I have concerns about having, being limited. But I think to answer your question, if you talk about existing approved projects where we don't, where they're not asking to intensify the development, it's modifications, it doesn't create any more housing, and legacy would be the example, Rice Ranch would be the example, because what I do see, quite frankly, is that when these projects come back to be modified, they're going to be less intensive than were originally approved, because that's actually where the market's kind of going. We're not going to, you know, 20-unit-per-acre condos. We're going to, going back to six and seven units per acre in small detached housing. That's probably the issue. So maybe that would help if we talked about approved projects where we're not intensifying the development. Those could be subject to a waiver of the ordinance.
Commissioner Valencia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I think discretion has diminished continually from the year I first came on to the commission to now, and little by little, the commission plays a smaller and smaller role in approving many of the projects. Case in point, some of these telephone sites and some other things that have been, where the director now makes the decision or the, somebody in the staff. And I think it's very important that the commission keeps its hand in, especially large projects like this, which develop land changes, minimizing sizes and increasing sizes and so on. And in this particular project, I'm glad that you're going to spend more time in review many of the things that perhaps are missing in the ordinance. It's, like I said before, it's impossible to come out with a perfect ordinance, but as close as you can get it to covering most of the bases, the important bases anyway, is very important to this particular issue. In this particular case, I will not be supporting the ordinance, as I indicated also, way in the beginning of this project. I feel that it, it approaches slightly a taking of people's land. Many people think, oh, well, we're just taking a few acres for somebody who's got 1,000 acres, but not everybody has 1,000 acres. There are many small parcels that have only 60, 70 acres, and they're long rectangular blocks that might be 10 acres wide and 30 or 40 acres long, and you take a long strip from then on the side, it's a big piece of land, and it's still a question of who's going to maintain it after five years, whose responsibility is it, in what mode it's going to be kept, and so on. And I think that the passive mode still needs to be reviewed of what can be put on there that would not harm the people and the farming operation and yet keep the pesticides away. Initially, this started to keep the pesticides away and herbicides, and it's morphed into something else. And that's all right, that it's all to protect the people and eventually the farmer too from lawsuits. But I think there are some, some things which may be already allowed, like pole barns, storage of equipment, in, in a fashion that provides a good view and doesn't distort the beautiful views that exist now. But all that is possible through the use of trees and hedges and what have you, but use of the land is very important. Agriculture is guarded very carefully in, in the North County. In Santa Barbara County, the stewards of the land have done a very good job over the last couple of hundred years, and that's why we have so much good land. But it's easy to take a piece here and a piece there. Urbanization has taken some of the land and it's going to continue taking. Lompoc was all agricultural land and people complained, why are we taking agricultural land? Well, we all live on agricultural land, all the land. Where I live was just 20 years ago, 25 years ago, was planted. And so we have to be very careful and the uses, if, if you squeeze a balloon here, it pops up some other place. As they say in physics, every action has a reaction. If you don't let them keep their equipment where they can have it handy, they're going to put it some other place where you might not want to see it. And so we have to make sure that this ordinance looks at every aspect of being able to use the land to the best advantage. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Valencia, as always, your point of view is appreciated, and I understand this, this entire ordinance is not without controversy, never has been, but it's my understanding that the agricultural interests in the county are really the, the initiators of the ordinance in the first place. So hopefully they'll weigh in again if they don't think we're going in the right direction. So, Mr. Hunt, unless you have further questions, it would be my suggestion that we continue the matter to our meeting of December 12th. Mr. Munoz?
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. I think what we might be hearing is a direction is to look at only those products that have already been fully approved, where there's an intensification of that development, that those types of projects may trigger the exemption, but only those types of projects that do not intensify the development.
Well, I, I think intensification is certainly a big issue, but in my case, you know, I think that there are other potential effects of the modification to some of these large projects. You take Rice Ranch or even Legacy Estates, that the community would be interested in. And it's those, it's those projects that I'd like to address. In other words, I, I think what, what I would support is not a complete exemption if an existing project comes in and says we're, we don't have as intensive a use. Intensive is a little subjective, and it may not mean number of units. Rather than define all that, my suggestion would be that the, the discretion of the decision-makers to weigh in on the buffer would be limited to those approved projects, period. You know, those, those projects that we have throughout the county that might seek amendment. Let me find out if there's support for that position. Commissioner Brown?
I, I do support that, Mr. Chair. I guess my only question to you and the commission is, the kind of project that Commissioner Blau pointed out, where the house, the lot line went through the house, and now there's a lot line adjustment. It seems that the commission should have some sort of discretion about not exempting the project from the buffer, but imposing perhaps different buffer widths. I'm not, I'm not sure, because it's hard to, to take a project that we don't have before us and trying to massage this ordinance for that project. But it just might, rather than having absolute for a project like that, it might be worthwhile to have some sort of discretion that says, we can apply a buffer, but it's not, it may not be 200 feet or 100 feet or whatever it might be, but it might be something less, but we do want to see some sort of buffer or some sort of vegetative screen or something that does protect the adjacent agricultural lands. I don't know if that's, if that, how the commission feels about that.
See, my concern with that now is that we're opening up a bigger hole, because I think if we had a hardship exception, for example, and everybody had the opportunity to come in and say, the ordinance is, as applied to my property is a hardship, then again, we're going to be undermining the basic purpose.
Well, I agree, all of this undermines the purpose of the ag buffer, but having an absolute where, sorry, Mr. Home, Mr. Property Owner, that's it. I wonder if that puts the commission in an untenable spot and perhaps, Mr. Munoz can weigh in on that. weigh in on that.
You know, there is always the alternative of amending the ordinance. The county's done that to address, as part of a project approval, a modification of the ordinance as to a particular property. So it's not like they, they have to go to court in order to express the concern. But, Mr. Munoz, you were going to say?
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. So, it could be that, you know, kind of looking at this in two parts. The first part being, what does he trigger for that quote-unquote exemption to apply? And then the second part could be, I use the word exemption in quotes, because maybe it could be that it's not a blanket that shall not apply, but rather it's, in those limited cases where that would be triggered, for example, an increase in housing density, for example. In those cases, then maybe it's not so much an exemption that the buffer requirements do not apply, but rather that the commission may have discretion to adjust the buffer width to something less than the minimum or something of that instance. So it's, it's, it's distinguishing between a blanket exemption does not apply and then taking that on one hand, on the other hand, looking at a case where the minimums can be adjusted below that mandatory minimum.
Okay, so how do you define the class of properties that would be eligible for that consideration?
Mr. Chair, that's, that's kind of the, that kind of goes back to my first question of, are we looking at this exemption being triggered when we're talking about, I think phrase it in terms of intensifying development, but if we're looking at something even more narrow to an increase in housing density, I think that's what we're trying to get some direction on.
Well, if I could, Commissioner Cooney, I don't think anybody is suggesting that there'd be an automatic exemption, for example, to Rice Ranch or to Legacy. What we're asking, what I'm angling for is that the commission has the ability to say that the ordinance doesn't apply. Now, we may want it to apply based on whatever changes they make in their program, but I'm just asking, just if it's an approved project, we would have the ability to say, we don't have to apply the ordinance to the existing project. We may want to, that could always be our, could do, could do that. In fact, if it comes back for any change in the project, I mean, our discretion is unlimited. So I think we just want to have the ability to say, it would not be fair to impose this new restriction on this particular approved project. It doesn't make sense. But that doesn't mean we're not going to if we decide that there's good reason to apply it.
I guess I'm concerned with the definition of approved project. And Commissioner Brown points out another instance where there could be exceptional hardship if someone wants to do a lot line adjustment for estate planning purposes or whatever. I think there are a lot of projects we're not thinking about that would benefit from discretion, but, yeah, it's, it's really difficult to narrow it, you know? So I, I guess part of what I'm asking staff to do is to address the definition of those projects that should be subject to the commission's discretion. And, and as you can see, we have a disagreement among ourselves, perhaps, as to whether that should be very broad in terms of defining approved projects, or whether it's very narrow in terms of projects seeking, seeking modifications which do not add to intensification of use.
Mr. Chair, we won't normally have two council addressing you, but on this one, we have talked-
I thought you'd left, and so, you know, I felt fairly comfortable.
Wishful thinking.
Mr. Gazza.
I think the concern we're addressing from the council side here is that in a zoning setting, zoning code setting, that when, when the police power is being exercised, and we hear the word hardship, that sounds like variance language without necessarily variance findings. So if the code has explicit plain English triggers and that may, that may or may not trigger this exemption or exception, and then the amount of discretion is spelled out as to whether the, the commission, the county, in the case of the board, can impose a buffer of X percent less size depending on these certain circumstances, then that's something that would be defensible. But I am concerned when we start talking about having a police power ordinance that applies sometimes, but not other times, in the absence of variance findings.
I understand and completely agree. So, I think the best course, if, if the commission agrees with me, is to refer this back to staff, including legal staff, and, and try and capture what we're trying to do here, which is to make the ordinance more practical and less punitive for a class of applicants that, that would seek to modify an existing project. Commissioner Blau.
Yeah, I was just going to ask my fellow commissioners if they might agree that lot line adjustments, even though there are discretionary processes, could be exempted from the ordinance altogether. I'm trying to, I'm trying to sit back and remember all the lot line adjustments we've done in the last six years. I can't really think of one that, that would, that it would, there was a benefit for doing a agricultural easement, I mean, or a buffer. So, I think that just got caught in the quotation discretionary thing, but I really can't see where that's going to be a benefit to anything, and it could be very harmful. So I'm just wondering if we could just example lot line adjustments from the process. Doesn't, now, again, a lot line adjustment is a discretionary approval. We have the ability to set any criteria on that lot adjustment. So if we discover that magic one that needs an agriculture buffer, we can impose it with or without the ordinance. But just so we don't harm anybody, I think if we could take that out, it would not affect our ability to protect agriculture should one come before us that needs it. But it certainly, I could see where that could harm somebody in a very significant way.
Commissioner Brown, you ready with that response?
No, I just want to follow up with Commissioner Blau's thought. It, I don't know, maybe this is the legal consideration, but it seems like if you're going to exempt a lot line adjustment, then how can you impose requirements? It seems like on one hand, if you're saying in a lot line adjustment, we don't, they're going to be exempt from ag buffer, but if it's a discretionary project, the commission can impose an ag buffer. I guess I'm sort of confused about that. Perhaps council can-
Well, you know, the obvious example that defeats the general rule suggested by Commissioner Blau is when you have a 40-acre property and the proposal is in, in the San Diego Valley where there are lots of five acres, to adjust the line so that you have a five-acre parcel and a 35-acre parcel, and the five-acre parcel is not subject to the buffer. You know, I, I think that-
But, but it could be. We could impose that buffer as a condition of the lawsuit.
But how would you do it? You'd wipe out the five-acre parcel if you had a 200 or 300-foot-
Well, then probably wouldn't approve the lot line adjustment. I mean, if the lot line adjustment ended up having a significant adverse impact on the adjacent property that was a farm, I'd never approve it. The point is, is that, I wouldn't approve the lot line adjustment. But what I don't want to do is to have that 40-acre parcel and we move the line over 10 feet, you know, and we don't do anything else, and all of a sudden he loses, you know, 300 feet of his property into the ag buffer. I just, you know, if it's appropriate for the buffer to be there, we're going to put it there. But let's not put it there automatically for unintended, it have unintended consequences.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I think, again, following up with some of the previous comments by council, to the extent that there could be certain, for example, percentage requirements or something stated in, in those cases, something with measurable objective criteria, that might help to define when this exemption from this requirement for an ag buffer may otherwise be triggered.
It's a little hard to understand what you have right in mind now, but I'm not opposed to working on this in any way staff feels is appropriate, and I understand that there's a difference of opinion fundamentally up here as to whether we should have this ordinance at all. So, I'm just trying to, to give you enough input from me and from the other commissioners so that you don't draft something that's completely off the board. I mean, we're really talking about a minority of commissioners who will not vote for it no matter what you exempt. So, we're trying to address the concerns of those who support the ordinance and, and provide some element of discretion, perhaps discretion to reduce the size by a certain percentage, maybe limited to 50% of the existing buffer minimum, whatever. But I leave it to you to, to come up with language that makes sense and is consistent with both the amount of environmental review that's been done on this project and with the input from the various constituencies that have participated to date and, and have left to us to finish it up. Okay? Commissioner Brown, the last word.
Yeah, thank you. You know, I, Mr. Munoz, I appreciate that you're going to have to write this language, but I really don't think adding a numerical value of percent reduction is helpful, because it may not apply to all cases. I think that Commissioner Cooney has very well stated what your project is here to write this language. So, I think that there's enough without having some sort of numerical value to say 50%, 30%, because it may not, it may not apply. I don't know. You can't tell. I mean, anyway, but I would support his, his concept here.
Okay, so we need a motion to continue this to the 12th of December.
So moved.
Oh, second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that's unanimous. We'll look forward to our staff report on this, so we can see what you've come up with. All right, that concludes the business of the Planning Commission for today, the 14th of December. One thing I would like to do in addition to, again, welcoming our new commissioner, is to adjourn in memory of a very, very close friend, a very solid contributor to Santa Barbara County, particularly the South Coast and particularly the community of Carpinteria, Terry Bliss, who at the age of 69 died last week after a long struggle with cancer. Terry was a very close friend and, and representative of the Bliss family in Carpinteria, and we'll, we'll certainly all miss him. So, our meeting is adjourned, and we'll see you again next month.